Mr. Morgan, could you lead us in the flag salute?
Could everyone please stand? Place your hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Let's see, let's go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Sure. Director Morgan?
Here.
Director Kildee?
Here.
Director Craven?
Here.
Chair Tremblay?
Here. And I realize we inverted the order, so in any event, we've already done the flag salute. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
I have some comments on Item C on the consent calendar. I don't know if you want to pull it or just have me make my comments.
Well, let's go ahead and pull it, because I actually, Mrs. Craven, want to pull and ask some questions about Item B.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll pull Item B and C, even if they're brief, for questions.
Okay.
Okay, let the record reflect that Mrs. McDonald has arrived. Are there any public comments? All right, hearing none, can I hear a motion on the consent calendar on Items A, D, E, and F respectively?
Move the approval of Items A, D, E, and F on the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on Items A, D, E, and F. Hold on just a second, I'm going to give Mrs. McDonald just a chance to catch up.
I apologize, there was an accident on the freeway.
No problem. So, Mrs. McDonald, we've got a motion on Items A, D, E, and F, and Items B and C are pulled for a couple of questions. Okay? All right, let's go ahead and vote on that motion, please. Okay, we're going to do, we're going to do a redo on that vote. On the motion to approve Items A, D, E, and F on the consent calendar, please vote.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'll vote. You wait, you are, or you're ready?
Twice.
If my color scheme is right, we're, okay, that's adopted 5-0. All right, let's go ahead and, on Item B, that's on the HVAC remedial repair for additional work at the sanitary plant, and, Mr. Thomas, I wanted to ask you a few questions on that. This item, and I'm not so concerned about the work itself being done, but it's a different contracting schematic that we're apparently going to use here, and the same, and the reason I want to bring it up now is this same discussion also applies to Items 3G and H on the council's consent calendar, because it's the same type of contracting schematic. I wanted to ask you, the, this is to provide for funds for remedial repair work that are outside the scope of the existing maintenance contract, right? That is correct. Okay. But is there any pending, is there any work currently, any remedial work currently pending?
This, this kind of work is work that they come upon, and so it's, it's work that will be, in the course of their, of their maintenance of the equipment, will become apparent to them, and then they would report back the kind of work that would need to be done to just to remediate it, to repair and fix.
Okay. And this contract was one that the city entered into, like the ones in the two city council agenda items on the, on the consent calendar, G and H?
That is correct.
The city entered into these contracts some time ago, right?
That is correct.
And it, and we didn't have this kind of clause in those contracts where there was an amount that was built in to do the remedial repairs?
In those contracts, the actual hourly rate for remedial repair was in the contract, but the number of hours themselves were not included, because the work hadn't been determined what might need to be done, but the rates were, the rates were included.
Okay. And the, two other questions, the, the amount in this, was that determined by the length of time, it's $6,900, was that, I know it's a small amount, but was that determined by the length of the time remaining on the contract?
Yes, that did play a part, so the, the contract that has roughly 25 months left would have the greater, has a greater percentage amount of the contract total.
Right, because the, the amount on, on Item 3H, for example, is pretty big.
Yes.
Much bigger than, than the first two.
And we entered into that agreement, I believe, in the fall, and, and so it's a three-year contract, and so that would extend for the, until the end of the contract, which like 25 months or so from now.
Oh, okay, all right. Now, actually, that, that concludes my questions. Does anybody else have any questions on Item B? Let's take Item C as, let's take questions on Item C, and then we can deal with both together.
I don't have any questions on Item C, I just have comments that I feel obligated to make. Kennedy Jenks is never going to live down our plant number two. Probably only a couple of us ever are around to remember plant number two, but plant number two we had was something they designed, it was creative, it was innovative, and the thing didn't work. It was our newest plant, and we had to tear it down and start all over, and I still have a bee in my bonnet over it, so I just want to say that whatever they're going to do to conduct this structural analysis and recommend specifications for replacing these things in our treatment plant, I want them to be tried and true, I don't want creative and innovative that's not going to work.
I can back that up, because we both went through that and said, "What? Bad engineering?" Part of it was bad engineering, and we said, "I don't care what it is, they, they cost money." And so I agree with what Charles said.
A lot of money, so that's my, I'll, I'll, I will move to approve both of these items.
That's fine, I have one more comment.
Okay, sorry.
And it was on Item B again, Mr. Thomas, and that is, there was an error in the contract amount in Section 2, and for the council's benefit, that amount was reflected at $27,049, it should be $21,049. Is that right? Did you, did you put that in the red folder? Oh, but it'll be corrected on the final form of agreement. Okay. Mrs. Craven, then, would you mind making a motion for Item C?
I'll make a motion to approve Items B and C.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Morgan, please vote. Okay, that item is passed 5 to 0. Any departmental items? Apparently none. Legal counsel, no items. Comments from staff? Looking at you, Mr. Clotzel, no comments. All right, comments from board members? All right, with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the Camarillo, Camarillo sanitary district meeting at this time. Thank you.
And with that, I will call the Camarillo City Council meeting to order, and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
Madam Mayor, there are no amendments, however, we will need to move from study session at 6:50 into closed session.
Okay, thank you. Any council members have anything?
Madam Mayor, I want to pull Item A, the revised form of minutes for a short discussion.
Okay. I have Item B I would like to, I mean, P, as in Paul, excuse me.
I have, I have just a one, it's, I just need a question answered. It's a little bit of what Councilmember Tremblay has said, it's Item H, but this is for the corp yard and the library facilities.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Let's go ahead and pull those three, is there?
I've got one more.
Okay.
And this is just so people can understand what the California Conservation Corps does. And I'd like to pull Item L and have that just presented, so people, the public can see the things they do in our community.
Okay, so there are requests to pull Items A, H, L, and P from the consent calendar, is that right? Okay. We're not there yet, because we have a presentation before we get to the consent calendar. Anita, could you join me? Anita Coleman has been with the city for 18 years?
Almost 27.
Almost 27. Well, let me tell you, I got up this morning, California time, at quarter to 1, so I could get to this meeting via a 6:00 AM flight from Washington DC, so I didn't subtract, I didn't add right, I didn't subtract right, whatever. I apologize. 18 with stormwater, and that, see, right here.
Okay.
Okay, I, I did subtract right. Anyway, she has been here a long time, and I remember you were working in Public Works for quite a while, and when our stormwater position came up, Bob Westdike told all the council members, "Anita is the perfect person for this." And I think you've done a marvelous job standing up the, the division, and making sure things got done with a very small dedicated budget. You have done a very good job, and we all appreciate everything that you've done. We have a city tile for you. The city tile is something that only a few people have, and we appreciate all the work you've done. Would you like to say a little bit?
Sure. I just want to thank the council, and thank staff, and my husband's here tonight, and friends, thank you for coming. It's been a pleasure working for the city, and not only that, we've, we've raised our family here, and we're really happy with Camarillo. We are moving onto the South, but we're going to miss the city, and we're going to, I'm especially going to miss all of you guys, so thank you.
With no Southern accent, what's, what state? Where?
Arkansas.
Arkansas?
Okay, now, don't go talking about other states, you've already gotten in trouble once, Mr.
I can say that with Texas, I know Arkansas.
Okay, John would like a picture.
Arkansas is one of those I would not move to. It's humid, everything.
And I know the other council members will want to say something too, so stay up here.
Want me to go first?
Mr. Kildee.
Yeah, Anita, we're going to miss you. An incredible employee for the city of Camarillo for all these years, always a smile on her face, and a can-do attitude, and the type of people that make our community what it is today, and it's been a pleasure to, to work with you, Anita, and I wish you nothing but success in the future, and your family and your friends are here, and it's a credit to you and everybody that knows you, and I'm humbled by your, your work here, it's been, you really made a lot of us look good for many years, Anita, and I know it was a, it was a challenging job at times, it was not easy, but you did it with dignity, and you did it with, again, a smile on your face, and you also did it with a lot of futuristic thinking, and that's what we needed at the time, and we still need it today, so again, I want to thank you for your years of experience, and again, I'm going to, I'm going to miss you, but our loss is your gain. Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald?
Certainly. Well, I too want to thank you, particularly the last 18 years, it's been a tough job, because things changed from the very beginning until now, and what, what's required of the city, and, and you have done a marvelous job, considering what we've, we've had to deal with. And again, it's that, I'm going to say, she's always so sweet, she's always so nice, even though what topic we're talking about, and so it, it has been a pleasure, and we wish you and your family the best.
Mr. Morgan?
Well, I think you've got the attitude to fit the South, one of the friendliest ones in our staff, and so I think you will fit well. But before I go on telling how great a staff you are, I think we ought to let one of their own staff heads, like Mr. Tom down here, say something about her.
How about I at least allow the one last remaining council member to finish out the, the round, and I'd be happy to make some remarks after that.
Mr. Tremblay?
Okay, I'll crawl on on my limb briefly. I'm the new kid on the block, but Anita, I know you and I've had the chance to work a little bit together, I've thoroughly enjoyed our work. Speaking from a professional environmental law perspective, this city stormwater program is first-rate, and you have done a first-class professional job on it, so I really want to salute you for all of your hard work, and wish you the very best in Arkansas. We're sorry to miss you, we're going to be, we're going to miss you. Thanks.
And even though we didn't pass the Clean Water Act, you've been in charge of enforcing it, and it's not always an easy job. Okay, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, thank you. So, actually, I had the pleasure of not knowing anything about stormwater at a time when it was becoming very controversial, and Anita was very patient with me, and very informative, and got me up the learning curve fairly quickly, and, and we worked together through some pretty tumultuous times on a rapidly changing permitting world with a lot of extra costs, and I think I remember when the program first started, our budget was $150,000 a year, and then it grew to something like 1.5 million or close to it, so Anita was great to work with and help me through a lot of the evolution I had to go through when I became the Public Works Director, so I certainly thank her for that, and as, as you have as well, wish her the very best in, in her endeavors going forward, and we'll certainly, again, appreciate everything she's done, and welcome her back to visit anytime she wants.
Mr. Clotzel?
Yes, I'll, I'll second the welcome back to visit, and possibly even for some input on ongoing items that we may need some assistance on. No, we're going to let Anita go out in style, and in a professional style, and I would also just like to add, obviously, all the sentiments said so far as a leader for our community in the stormwater program, but also countywide. She has been one of the leading personnel in the stormwater management program, that's a countywide effort, but Camarillo has always been looked to as, as one of the leaders, as the, being at the forefront of the input, and guiding and directing the cities and the county, and then obviously Camarillo towards managing a challenging task, so I've also appreciated working with Anita over the years, both my first time here in the Camarillo and now as a director here, so definitely echo all the sentiments, and congratulations.
Thank you again, Anita. Now, we go on to the consent calendar. We have had requests to pull Items A, H, L, and P. Item A would go to City Clerk? Um, is that right? So, Item H will go to Administrative Services. Item L will go to Public Works. And Item P, I guess, Public Works, I don't know who that is, Public Works? Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of those four items?
Some moved, I'll withdraw.
There's a motion in a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. And when we get to those items.
Public Works?
Okay, City Clerk's way at the back. So, next is Public Works. First item is Item A, Transit Operations and Maintenance Service Assignment of Agreement. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mary Craven. The city has a current agreement with Roadrunner to provide the transit services for the city. Section 17 of the agreement provides for assignment of the agreement to another provider. Roadrunner is in the process of selling their business to RATP Dev, we'll call it RATP for short from now on, which is a national company providing transit services, and the plan is for Roadrunner to sell their business to RATP. This would include taking over Roadrunner's all of their services, including the intercity buses for VCTC, commonly known as the Vista Buses previously, as well as taking over all of the Camarillo Transit Service operations. Roadrunner has submitted a request to assign their Camarillo agreement to RATP. The assignment would not be final until the sale of Roadrunner to RATP occurs, so the suggested action before you is a motion to authorize the city manager to send a letter to Roadrunner and RATP approving their request for assignment of the agreement for transit operations and maintenance services to RATP, provided that RATP acquires Roadrunner. That concludes my report, and be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, Dave, so the current, as I understand this, reading the material, the current contract stays in place, least of not which, the Vista contract stays in place too, at the set rates that were negotiated when the contract was negotiated?
So, as far as the Vista services, or the VCT services, that's going to be a separate item to be figured out, if you will, with this, with the acquisition of Roadrunner by RATP with, with VCTC. So, our understanding is those services are going to be, they're going to assume that contract, the VCTC contract also.
Also, can I assume that the current services that Roadrunner do provide to our residents here will just be morphed into this new company if, in fact, the negotiations go as planned?
That's correct. As far as it affects this agreement, which is for the Camarillo area Transit Services, it'll be RATP providing the same exact services under the same exact agreement that Roadrunner provides right now.
Okay, and then we're, because as I read this, I mean, obviously, it's a very long company with a lot of tentacles in the transit business, and has business not only, you know, outside, not only inside of our state, but outside of our state, are you comfortable that if, in fact, that the negotiations go as, as do proceed, that they have the wherewithal to provide the level of service that we're accustomed to having?
Right. As far as what we know, for the ability of RATP to provide the services that are currently provided by Roadrunner, we, we understand that they'll be able to adhere to the requirements of our agreement.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Morgan?
Just a couple of things. One is, will they continue, who will own the, the companies and transit services outside of the state of California? Is that also going along with the purchase?
That's a good question. There are representatives here from RATP, and they may be better suited to answer that.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone here from RATP who would like to? Please give your name for the record.
I'm Blaine Rigler, president of RATP.
Okay. Mr. Morgan, can you ask your question?
Oh, question have, I know they have some things in Phoenix, and surely a couple others places, I don't know, but are, are you going to also take those and purchase those?
So, we're, we're acquiring the company in its entirety, so yeah.
The whole thing.
All of the businesses, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, Mrs. McDonald?
I do have a couple, and I guess I first want an assurance for our public, that there will be an absolute seamless transition, that they won't know the difference, that the employees, and, and drivers, and dispatchers that they're used to dealing with will continue on.
Correct, that's, yeah, I, I don't know that we intend to change anything, not even the name, of the organization to start, and then I think, you know, to answer the question is, in terms of things that we do elsewhere in the US, I think the, you know, one of the advantages is, we do do this in a, in a number of different places, so I think that's a benefit ultimately to the city of Camarillo, and experiences that we've had elsewhere, and how we might bring some of those lessons learned here to only enhance the service.
I have another question. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Mrs. McDonald has the floor.
And I, one thing I'm, and I, again, I'm very concerned about that transition, because that can be very hard for people, because we have senior citizens, particularly that really don't rely on the dial-a-ride and are very used to the people that they deal with. I know in the VCTC contract, there is a clause that talks about maintaining the current employees, as well as the operations manager, the project manager. I would assume that that would, same clause would apply to the city of Camarillo contract, that we would have some guarantees. I know it's for the project manager, or the, or the operation manager, it's a two-year guarantee that they will continue on, will we also have that guarantee of that consistency?
Yeah, so, I mean, we adhere to whatever the terms of any contract are, and will continue to do that. I mean, just from a pure business standpoint, our, our intent is acquiring the companies, the leadership that's in place today in Ventura County, in the city of Camarillo, will continue to be the leadership, the workforce will continue to be the workforce, providing the same service.
I know in our, in the city of Camarillo contract, it doesn't stipulate it quite in the same language that VCTC does, and having sat on both pieces of, of that negotiation, I know that theirs is a little stronger in that way, so I want to make sure the city of Camarillo has that same assurance from you, that things will continue on.
Yeah, there's no doubt they'll continue on, I mean, we, we absolutely do not want to have a negative impact on the, the rider experience, and, and our goal is to continue as is and improve where we can.
Okay. And that gets me to, I have two more questions. At our VCTC meeting on the 6th, we talked about closing escrow a week later, and we're now headed to three weeks later. When do you expect to close?
Yeah, so, that's an ever-changing date, as you've already figured out, but, yeah, we, we have moved past the rocks and past the pebbles, and now we're dealing with the sand, so there's a few minor things that we're still working through, but we expect the, the purchase and, and sale agreement to be finalized by the end of this week, and our intent is to have the deal fully wrapped up and closed prior to Friday, May the 11th, which is probably the next time that I'll see you, so.
That isn't exactly what you promised VCTC, but I guess, on the other hand, you did say before the next meeting, but I would hope that it would be sooner or later, so that we're sure we don't miss that deadline again.
We won't miss the deadline, so I, I say that, I mean, everyone is, is working hard to, you know, finalize the, the dotting of the i's and the crossing of the t's, but all the, the big items that we've talked about, and those meetings have been worked through at this point in time.
Okay. And I think another one that affects the city of Camarillo is, what you propose to do as far as the properties and the housing of the buses, not only our CAT, but also VCTCs, will that continue as well?
Yeah, the properties, so we'll lease the properties as is today from the Sandlin family, and we'll continue to maintain those. I mean, our, our hope is, just aesthetically speaking, that there are changes that we will be able to make, that will, at least in my mind, make it appear differently than it is today, but yeah, we, we plan to lease the properties from the family, all the properties that exist today.
And I know that was one of the things that they were in the middle of, was making all of those improvements, so I'm glad to hear that you too want to make those improvements, and together you can make that happen. I believe those are my only questions.
Mr. Morgan?
Oh, just one more. As you know, the Sandlin family's been a, a part of this community for a long time. They're the ones who helped make that happen, from the days of just the shuttle rides around things to what it is today. I'm hoping that somehow they can stay part of your operation, because they've, they're well-liked in the community, and I think they do a great job, because they wouldn't continue growing if they didn't. But I'm hoping that you keep them aboard, if possible, because that'll get, get you through these years of transition.
Yeah, so Charles is definitely staying on with us, and will continue to be part of the team. Sue is staying on with us through the transition, so through the balance of this year. Des is going to retire, and maybe live a better life.
No.
Yeah, that, that is the plan as we know it today, yeah.
I'm glad to hear that as well.
Other, other questions? Mr. Tremblay? Oh, Mr. Morgan, were you finished?
I'm finished.
Mr. Tremblay?
I have a couple of questions.
I pushed the wrong button, oh, well.
You voted already.
Yeah, I did.
Before you ask your question?
I pushed the wrong button, I'm still not on a California time, time zone. A couple of questions have already been asked, but I want to reconfirm with you the, that the agreement for transit operations, the XTAN agreement between the city of Camarillo and, and Roadrunner, as the assinee of that agreement, RATP will, will abide in all respects with all provisions of that agreement, correct?
Yeah, we're assuming the contract as is.
Okay. Second, there's a section in that contract, Section 21, relative to a performance bond, is that the intent of RATP, that the surety bond that will be provided, or the performance bond that will be provided, will be with a California-admitted surety insurer?
I would lie to you if I gave you an answer, but only to say that we will abide by the, the contract as is, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, specific to insurance, we have looked at that and whether or not this particular organization can roll under a master agreement that we have and have deemed that we would not do that at this point in time. So, I guess the short answer would be yes, it would. At some point in time in the future, that may change, but as it stands today, it would remain as is in the state of California.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
I just have a comment if I could make one.
Certainly.
And thank you. We'll see you again in a few weeks.
Great. You will.
And hopefully with that final document signed.
I won't be at the meeting if I don't have. I've already booked my ticket, so.
Oh, good. All righty. We'll see you. I just wanna make a comment and Mr. Morgan mentioned it as well, is to really thank the Sandlin family and the Roadrunner family for being such an important part of our community. They are very civic-minded. They have always had the best interest of the city of Camarillo at heart. It's people, not only its riders that it serves on a daily basis, but all the people of Camarillo. They've been there to support many organizations and do so much more than just provide transit service. So, in my eyes, RDTB has a big shoes to fill because this community expects a lot and is very used to very, very good service. So, I'm hoping that you can continue that tradition because they have certainly set the bar high for what we expect here and what our community deserves. So, we thank the Sandlin family and we look forward to making sure our good service continues.
Your honor, can I?
Mr. Kildie.
Because the Sandlin family's here, a very, very large part of the fabric of our community here. And just because you're gonna retire doesn't mean that you're not gonna be called upon to continue to make Camarillo the greatest place in the county to live. So, I wanna thank you, the family and all your friends and the support that you've given the city and hopefully the support that the city has given to you. It's an incredible success story and a business plan and I commend you for that.
Mr. Tremblay.
Could we ask someone from the family if they wanna say something?
Could I make a comment?
Me too. I haven't made a comment yet either.
Pardon?
So, I haven't made a comment yet either.
I know. Mr. Morgan?
Just wanna say that I've known the Sandlin family for many, many years. I coached his son, not the other one, the baseball player. And they have always been great for this community. When you ask them for something, they have helped. And so, I've appreciated everything they've done all these years. I know they're gonna stick around and I know Dez is not gonna retire. There's gonna be things he's gonna be doing because I don't see him sitting around. Thank you.
Okay. Well, first of all, I hope that the people from RATP understand that they're gonna be asked to do a lot of things in the community from, not by us necessarily, from all the groups that the Sandlins have helped through the years. And I wanted to thank the Sandlins. I first met Dez, I think it was shortly after he bought Newberry Park Shuttle. And it was going to be New Year's Eve and Stan Daley and I went out to the old police station and on Palm Drive and had our picture taken with Dez in front of one of the shuttles because that, New Year's Eve, he was offering free rides to anybody home from a bar who felt they needed to not drive. And after that, Roadrunner has done a lot for the city. That was before they handled the city transit services. After that, the city helped Roadrunner a lot too because there was a time when Mayor Bradley in L.A. and the, whatever they call the commission at L.A. Airport was going to ban all pickups. Anybody could drop off, but no, nobody but, I think it was Mayor Bradley's company could pick up passengers. And we got wind of that and on a 48-hour notice, we, it got to the council because we were having a meeting. We had a subsequent need item. And within 48 hours and before the meeting of the World Airport, whatever they call themselves, we had letters from every city in the county and the Ventura County Transportation Commission faxed over there and they said, "Well, we'll let out-of-county people bring in pickup." And that was the start of having out-of-area shuttles being able to continue. And it took, what, five or six years for that to happen? They kept delaying and delaying and delaying their decisions and we kept the letters going. So, it's been mutual. And then, it's only been a few years that they have operated our bus system. And I want to say that since they've been operating, the complaints we've had have been miniscule compared to what they used to be. We used to get complaints all over about our bus system. It was bad. And they've done a really good job, so thank you. Having all of us said that, I would like to ask what are the wishes of the council?
Could I just ask if one of the Sandlin family would like to say something since they're all here?
Certainly.
Who gets, who gets this?
Honorable council members, thank you. On behalf of my family, it's been an honor to serve this community for so many years and we look forward to working with RATP Dev to continue the tradition. They're a great company and we look forward to providing great service for this community to continue. And anything my dad or my mom can do in their retirement and I, as a citizen of this community, continue to support, this community will continue to do so. We have the greatest staff here in all of the county, California, and also the greatest council members, as you guys know. You guys are great. Your support has been awesome and we really appreciate everything that you guys have done to help our family to where we are today. Just wanna say thank you.
Thank you. Okay. What are the wishes of the council?
Your honor, I'll make a motion that they're authorized, the city council, to send a letter to Roadrunner and RATP approving the request for assignment of the agreement for the transit operations and maintenance services to RATP, provided that RATP acquires Roadrunner.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item B, Camarillo Corridor Street Improvement, ST 5049, award of contract.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. I have a short presentation here. The item before you is to consider award of the contract to Hardy and Harper Incorporated for this overlay project. They are the low and responsible and responsive bidder on the project. Just wanted to explain a little bit the way the project is set up with the base bid and the different alternate bids. On the screen there, we show the base bid streets. Essentially, we organize, is typical for our paving projects, so we organize them in a way to list or include the major streets as the base bid that are for sure gonna get done with this project based on the level of funding. Then, based on their competitive bids, you know, there's the possibility that prices come in favorable, that we can add additional locations. So, we structure the bid documents with alternates. And for this case, as you see in red, was the base bids on those streets. Alternate bid number one, another major item that we wanna get done is Carmen Drive between Paseo-Camarillo and Ventura Boulevard. So, alternate bid number one was broken out and these are significant efforts on a major arterial that have cost implications. So, we broke it up into various segments and fortunately, we're able to award all the Carmen Drive work. But alternate bid one goes from just north of the Paseo-Camarillo and Carmen intersection so that we complete the full intersection and don't have to come back and mess up the intersection with a subsequent. So, we go a little bit past to the north, all the way down to Daley Drive. Alternate bid number two includes the stretches on either side of the concrete surface bridge. That's why you see a gap in the middle of the actual bridge going over the freeway lanes is concrete, so that will not get an overlay. So, alternate bid two takes us from Carmen all the way over through the intersection at Ventura Boulevard. And then, we are also not awarding at this time alternate bid number three and bid number four, essentially because the amount of funding that we have available will get us through alternate bid number two, or base bid in one and two. And also, these other two alternates, three and four, you know, if we had the money available and the bids came in to be able to overlay and we would, these streets aren't in the same level of necessity for paving right away. So, we're gonna hold off on these two stretches and address those in future paving projects. The other bid alternate, number five, that we are gonna include in this project is sidewalk, curb gutter and access ramp improvements and in the, largely in the two areas shown there, we've identified locations that need to be done. The other base bid and alternate bids, one or two, do the same type of work also. So, this type of work is already a part of the contract and we can, based on the bid prices, it behooves us to add in this work also. Over here in the Mission Oaks area, we'll be coming up with our future paving project over there also. So, we're getting ahead of the game doing this concrete work over there. So, that's the item before you for award of these. It is, the overlays are within the, what we call the Camarillo Corridor area. The funds there are coming from actually proceeds from the previous redevelopment bond. So, this Camarillo Corridor area is identical to the area of the former redevelopment. So, this is the funding source that's identified. Several other funding sources, as shown in the staff report, are also used where it relates to raising and adjusting manholes and water valves. So, the water fund and the sandy fund also contribute to this effort. So, that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, Dave, have you checked references as far as the Hardy and Harper, Inc.?
Yes.
Yeah. And they check out?
They're a qualified contractor, yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? I just have one comment and that is that, this is the first time we've used them, is that correct?
On a full overlay project?
Yes.
I believe so. They have done work in the city as a subcontractor for other overlay projects.
Well, I don't know if they were involved in the Flynn Road one a couple of years ago, but it was done excellently. I mean, it was just done in such a way that traffic still moved while they had those machines grinding and trucks going. And if they can do the same type of a thing on Carmen, it'll be wonderful because Carmen's a very busy street and I'd hate to see things stop. Is there anybody here from Hardy and Harper who'd like to speak to us? Okay?
Your honor?
Yes.
The only problem we have a little bit on Carmen is that Flynn Road is wider because you have bike path and all kinds of things. This one, down that one section is just real narrow. It's gonna be tough.
Well, we're hoping for good things. What are the wishes of the council?
Your honor, I'll move that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Hardy and Harper for the base bid and alternative bids, one, two and five, in the amount of $2,239,000 and execute the contract change orders for projected contingencies in an additional amount not to exceed $335,850 for a total authorized expenditure of $2,574,850.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item C, Freeway Northbound Auxiliary Lanes Project, ST 5058, Caltrans Cooperative Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Craven. This item is to consider entering into that cooperative agreement with Caltrans and that is to provide the review and oversight of the 101 freeway auxiliary lanes project. As it is on the 101, Caltrans plays a very significant role in the review and oversight of our efforts. We have a consultant hired. They're already working on this project and preparing conceptual alternatives and also the initial environmental effort for our project that, again, is looking to move forward and implementing improvements for auxiliary lanes to do anything we can from the city of Camarillo to relieve as much congestion as we can as possible on the 101. The result of this effort is a project study report that needs to be approved by Caltrans to then take the next step into preliminary design and ultimate approval. But this is the initial step to prepare what's called the project initiation documents that need to be prepared and then approved by Cal, reviewed and approved by Caltrans. So, the funding source again for this falls within that Camarillo Corridor area. So, it's being funded by the Camarillo Corridor Project Funds and it's the agreement, cooperative agreement, ready to be executed upon council's approval. That completes my report and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, with Caltrans, Dave, what's the timeline with this or do you have a estimate on that?
Yes, so for this initial step, again, this is what's called the project initiation documents. It's very conceptual alternatives that are identified along with their resulting general level of environmental impacts. It's the first step of the environmental step that eventually will move into the next step is preparing the actual environmental document and more preliminary design of one alternative, of the alternative that we select. So, our consultant for this initial stage is saying through the end of this year, our goal is to have those documents, the project study report completed and approved by Caltrans by the end of 2018.
Okay. That's pretty quick.
Any other questions? What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item C, North Pleasant Valley Desalter Project, general contractor prequalification.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. It is Item D. I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, I apologize.
But anyway, it's, item is to consider approval to implement a contractor prequalification process to identify qualified contractors that will then be invited to bid for the construction of the desalter project. Our design consultant is well underway in the design. We're at the 60% design submittal. It's under review right now and continuing to move forward with, moving towards completion of the design with a goal of getting out to bid in September, October timeframe so that we can have bids back and award a contract before the end of the year. So, this process is in conformance with the Public Contract Code, which allows putting together a prequalification process. And it includes the items that are in the packet here, but essentially focus on contractors, interested contractors submitting their package, explaining their relevant project experience. We'll be focusing on the history of contractors, for successful completion of similar types of projects. There's a financial viability element that is submitted and then that will be reviewed by staff and our, and our project management consultants to essentially shortlist qualified contractors who will then be invited or eligible to submit a bid when those bid documents are available and we will be advertising those. Like I mentioned, we're planning to get those advertised in the September, October timeframe for bid. So, upon council's approval, I'm moving forward with this. We intend to get the package released to contractors. We know who's out there and we'll be able to be in contact with them. It'll be publicly posted and advertised and so we'll make sure we're doing the outreach necessary to get out to as many qualified contractors as possible, then asking them to submit their prequalification package. We're looking to have that received in June and go through the final process in late June to be able to end up with that list of qualified contractors that we can submit, eventually submit the construction documents, asking for their construction bids.
Any questions? Mr. Tremblay.
Yeah, Dave, a couple of questions that occurred to me as I was listening to your presentation. How many contractors at this point, putting you on the spot, do you estimate will go through the prequal, sorry, the prequalification process?
Yeah, I don't have a real exact number off the top of my head. I mean, we know there's several large prominent, so at least, you know, three, I'm, you know, just a rough number that we know for sure and most likely more. There already are contractors tracking this that have been in contact with staff, knowing this is coming up. So, we feel like there's gonna be an adequate pool, so to speak, of qualified contractors to build this list.
Some, my experience is that sometimes there's a downside in doing a, in doing, sometimes there's actually a downside in doing a prequal, sorry, I'm lapsing, a prequalification process. But as your staff report notes, some of the upsides are expediting the evaluation and award of the construction contract. Do you agree that's, that's the case typically?
Yes.
And then you said a reduction in the range of bids from leveling experience requirements. And I take it that you mean that, that means that the chances are, once you, city goes through a prequalification process, you're not gonna get bids that are ranging from here to here. They're gonna be more, they're gonna be closer in range. Is that what that language means?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And then also a reduction, the staff report says a reduction in lower, in low bidder bias. Can you just explain that one?
Well, yeah, you know, it actually, generally bias all, it kind of removes all possible bias depending on certain contractors when, you know, the process has gone through to really center the needs of the project to specific contractors with very specific experience. So it, you know, limits, say, a low bidder coming in that may barely qualify or may just be, you know, submitting a bid to see if it, see if it flies.
And want to low, have a lowball bid?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I mean, to me, this is the type of significant project that merits a pre-qualification process. Most projects don't ever get to that point.
Correct.
Okay. No other questions, thanks.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I'll move that we direct staff to implement a contractor pre-qualification process for the North Pleasant Valley Desalter Project.
A second. Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. The next item was pulled from the consent calendar, item L, which was the California Conservation Corps sponsor agreement. I believe what Mr. Morgan asked for was not, was not a discussion of it, but a highlight to let people know what it is that the California Conservation Corps has done for the city and maybe for how long.
Yes.
Okay, yes, I have a 20-minute presentation prepared for this item.
Well, we have nine minutes.
Yeah, roughly, I believe it goes back to 1996 that the cities have been involved through formal agreement with the California Conservation Corps to provide local, young adults, an opportunity to provide skills and experience primarily in the field of public works. And it's a really a win-win situation for both the city and the California Conservation Corps. They've provided this level of labor to us over the years. Several of our current employees and even past employees have come up through the CCC ranks and applied for and gained permanent, or full-time positions with the city. So invaluable experience is gained here, plus it's a very cost-effective approach for labor. One of the recent approaches that we took through a separate site agreement, this is an annual, annual ongoing agreement with them for the set amount of hours per year. We also have the opportunity, as we just removed the grass out of the Carmen medians, I don't know if anybody saw that effort out there, but there is a whole, a large group from the CCCs that came out and provided that effort very cost-effectively in a very short timeframe. So it's a very effective, very successful program that we are pleased to continue on with.
They all had those yellow things on. I thought it was our staff, but it was them, huh? Good. One of the reasons I wanted to bring this up and let everybody hear is that CCC has been good for this community for years. If it's not out doing trails and helping the parking wreck, it's doing a lot of things that you'd have to pay for if they didn't come through and really work with us in a lot of these things. As he said, one got, some have gotten jobs, received jobs here. And that was one of the things I want to make sure they're put into position where they can kind of see and learn. That's what they're, they're trying to get them to do too, in the communities that they work in. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
What are the wishes of the council?
Move the approval.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next item was pulled from the consent calendar, item P. It's Pressure Washing Services Request for Proposals. And the reason I pulled this is because periodically and for various reasons, we pressure wash sidewalks on Ventura Boulevard, the curbs sometimes, the train station. And a person, well, actually, two people on different occasions have asked me, "How come the city can wash their sidewalks down when I can't according to the water conservation ordinance?" So that's the question.
So there is a provision in our conservation ordinance that we can perform washing down for health and safety reasons, and that'd be the primary effort that's going on here. There's a certain amount of trash and spillage, and, you know, for health and safety reasons, it's important to keep that clean.
Next time I'm asked, I will have an answer.
This will be after the Fiesta though, right?
That is one of, that is one of the times that, yes, we come in after that. This contract will allow us to do it as needed throughout the year.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Can I ask just one question on that, a little quick piggyback on that? Are we ever going to restain some of those sidewalks that have been pretty much discolored?
We don't have an active plan to go out and restain those. When there is a need to remove or replace some of it, that we, it's a very, it's a challenge to restain all of the concrete out there, weathers and at various degrees. Difficult to restain something, to go back to exactly the way it was before, plus then blend in with something else next, right next to it that's already aged. So it's more, as we have a need to do any replacements of sidewalk or curb and gutter, that we do our best to match it accordingly, but not a concerted effort area-wide to do any restaining.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I'll move the approval of item P on consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. It's now 5:56. We do have the need to go into a closed session at some point before we come back. We also have three items on the study session agenda. So I will ask the city attorney to please let us know the conditions under which we can go into closed session.
This will be a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9D4. Number of cases is two.
Okay. We will go into study session and for at least one item on closed session, perhaps more, and we will recess and be back at 7:30. Ask that the record reflect that all council members are present. I'm going to ramble a little bit, and I apologize, we have a full chamber here, but I started this morning at, I think it was a quarter to one California time, a quarter to four Washington DC time, so that I could catch a six o'clock plane to come home to be here at this meeting. And we took off from Reagan Airport, flying over the Atlantic. It was a beautiful, clear day, and so then we flew over the Appalachian Mountains on a route I'd never really flown before, landed in Detroit before coming on out to LA. So we flew over the breadbasket, the snowcaps of the Rockies, the vast Mojave Desert, seeing the Sierras in the distance, and then driving home on the coast route. So I've been coast to coast, sea to sea today. And I'm going to ask everybody to do something a little bit different. Well, as I was flying, I happened to be thinking of the conversations. I was in Washington DC on city business. City's a member of the Regional Defense Partnership for the 21st Century. And that is a group of cities and the county, people who are retired from the military bases, and the activity, many of the tenant activities out at the base, working to keep our base, working to increase the number of tenant commands out there, working to bring more tenant commands in, and to strengthen each of the tenant commands that are currently out there. And so in two days, we visited a lot of offices on Capitol Hill and in the Pentagon and in various government offices in between. And at every single one of them, the message to us was the same, that in the past 10 years, it has become, the American political system has become more and more polarized. And it doesn't matter whether, who's in charge, it's practically impossible to get anything done that these people, at least, all defense people, thought was necessary to get done because of the various projects that the administrations want to get done. And the polarization message just kept coming home to us or being talked about to us. And so with all of those rambling thoughts in mind, I'd like everybody to stand and sing with me a song that Kate Smith made popular, "God Bless America." And then please remain standing, and I will ask after that, Mrs. McDonald, to please lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I sing, they might all go home.
Sing. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the ocean white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. Beautiful. Please join me in the pledge of the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we take public comments. We have quite a few people here who might not have been at Camarillo City Council when we've had public comments before. So I'm going to explain to you what our rules are for public comments. Each person will have three minutes, and I have a lot of people who want to speak, so I will hold each and every person to the same three-minute limit. That way, nobody's going to get extra time or favoritism. At the end, I can see a clock and you can see a clock. There'll be a little green light on when you first start talking. We ask you to state your name clearly so that there is a, the people at home can tell who you are, and so that it'll be there for the record. This is recorded and can be played again. As you, the time winds down, it'll get to a minute, and there will be a tone sounds. The little light will turn yellow, and then when it gets down to zero, a red light will come on, and the, a loud buzzer will sound. And as I always say, if you don't stop, then the floor just opens and you go down and the next person can come on up. In addition to that, we don't allow people to clap. We don't allow people to boo. We are here to hear what everybody wants to tell us. We don't want anybody to feel intimidated in telling us how they feel because we're here to hear how all the people of Camarillo feel. So with those rules, I'll call the first person, Tony Doltz.
Mayor, council members. My name is Tony Doltz. I'm a foreign-born, naturalized citizen. I'm married, and I have two minor children. Something unfortunate has happened. Governor Brown signed SB 54. SB 54 is a new law that makes it illegal for local law enforcement to turn over criminal illegal aliens to the federal government. Since the new law, criminal illegal aliens with no legal right to live or work in the United States are let loose onto our streets where they may do us harm. The federal government has sued California over SB 54 alleging that it is unconstitutional. Many cities and counties agree and have filed amicus briefs, such as Simi Valley. I ask you to put on the agenda a motion for a stay of enforcement until the court's rule on SB 54's constitutionality. Your failure to act has put us in danger since SB 54 became law, in my opinion. Failure to vote on a stay of enforcement forces armed federal agents to ferret out these dangerous criminal illegal aliens openly in the streets, which will inevitably lead to violent altercations, injury, or death of federal agents, innocents in the community, and the illegal aliens themselves. Why would you consent to SB 54 tying the hands of local law enforcement, especially as it represents an unnecessary public safety danger? Do not delay. Put on the agenda a motion for a stay of enforcement. Beginning today, city residents will launch a website and Facebook page entitled SB 54 First Victim. The first Camarillo victim at the hands of a criminal illegal alien released under SB 54 will reflect on you. These social media sites will inform the residents of your courage to defend us and/or your failure to act. On these pages, we will honor the first victim and the victim's family and disclose what role each of you played. Starting today, SB 54, public scrutiny and accountability begins in Camarillo. Visit www sb54firstvictim.com and facebook.com/sb54firstvictim. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Arthur Shaper, I think it is?
Shopper.
Shopper, I'm sorry.
Yes, my name is Arthur Shopper. I'm a resident of Torrance, California, from Los Angeles County. I'm here supporting the city of Camarillo and their proud residents who have shown great courage and determination to be here to pressure and inform you of your need to opt out of Senate Bill 54. Each of you took an oath to uphold and defend the United States Constitution. Senate Bill 54, so-called sanctuary state law, is patently unconstitutional. It violates Article 1, Section 8, which speaks to the enumeration powers. The federal government has immigration powers, and the state cannot intervene with that. It also violates Article 4, Section 4. The United States government must provide a republican form of government and protect each state from foreign invasion. The state law is inviting invasion, telling criminals that they can come to this state illegally and be protected from ICE. Last of all, it violates Article 6, Section 2, that is the supremacy clause. Supreme law of the land is the United States Constitution, and SB 54 clearly violates that, taking a power away which belongs to the federal government per Article 1, Section 8. It also violates federal law, which requires state, county, and local law enforcement officials to communicate with ICE and other federal agencies. This law has precluded local and county enforcement from working with DHS and other federal agencies to stop drug trafficking and human trafficking, as well as to ensure the safety of our communities. LA County Sheriff Jim McDonald sacrificed great political capital. He opposes Senate Bill 54. Now, I respect Sheriff Jeff Dean of Ventura County, yet his brothers and sisters throughout the state, per the California Sheriffs Association, have declared official opposition to Senate Bill 54, even after its passage. Side with your law enforcement throughout the state, as well as in your county and in your cities. Now, I recognize that this city council took the bold measure. You issued a letter opposing the bill. You now have a responsibility, per your oath of office, to oppose this unconstitutional act. You have at least three options. First, pass a resolution opposing Senate Bill 54. Second, file an amicus- Second, file an amicus brief, joining with the city of Huntington Beach and their lawsuit. They are actually suing the state directly, not an amicus through the DOJ. You also can file an amicus or a jointer with your sister city, Simi Valley. Last of all, you have the legal authority, your city attorney can inform you, to issue a stay of enforcement or a stay of compliance. The city of Orange did exactly that, and what it states is simply this: Because the state law is in conflict with federal law, the city has no choice but, for the time being, to still side with federal law until the courts have finally settled this issue. You have an opportunity and a responsibility per your oaths of office. Oppose SB 54, protect your police, protect your community, and let's make California great again, constitutional again.
Thank you. George Miller? Mandy or Mandy Jacob?
Yeah, pull it right down, so you can speak right into it. Okay, thank you. City council members, thank you so much for letting me speak to you and address you tonight. My name is Mandy Jacob. I'm a resident of Ventura County. I myself am a legal immigrant, and ran an immigration company for over a decade. And this SB 54 is obviously close to my heart on a financial level, economic level, personal level, and business level. There are many reasons why this is obviously illegal, and my co-partners over here, or speakers, have dealt with the illegal issue. But there are other things that I'd like to tell you about, which will really make you individually liable. If you're familiar with a group called Fight Sanctuary City, they've actually issued a brief now that will pierce the corporate veil of the city council in any form of sovereignty. So in actual fact, each member in the city council is now going to be responsible for the decision you've made. There are websites out there that are logging which city council member voted for or against SB 54, but this is actually a legal brief, so that even if you, which I'm sure you won't, discard your oath, there are ramifications for actually not going ahead with SB 54. Again, you know, as the fallen angels, their parents hear about this, and families, there's going to be a second issue now with them potentially being able to file lawsuits against the individuals. So that's just something that is really pertinent information, that I think you need to know, besides all the legal information. Again, going back to the Ventura County Sheriff, Jim McDonald from L.A. County, stated something which I think is so important, because there are many people who are for SB 54, and those people, I feel like, haven't actually read it. SB 54 is not an immigration issue, and this is actually what Jim McDonald said. I'm opposed to SB 54 based on the future security and safety issues. This is regardless of any immigration issues. And this is a really important point, because I know that people that are for SB 54 keep bringing up the issue that we have to love illegal aliens, and that is absolutely an option, but this is not about illegal aliens, this is about felons being back on our streets. And the final thing, I'd love to give you a statistic from SCAP, S-C-A-P, 2016. They actually are the bureau that receives the state of California's numbers of the illegal immigrants in the jails, so that they can get refunded from the Fed. And they have a statistic here, just in 2016, there were 52,000 illegal immigrants in the jail system. So if you do the math based on the California residents, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I need a question, question, question first.
Okay.
On your stats, on those people in state custody and federal custody, you show it's a total, because I think I know what the total is, but what do you have?
No, I only have for the state of California.
Okay, what do you have for the state of California?
Fifty-two thousand.
No, percentage-wise, are prisoners in custody?
Oh, I don't have that statistic, sorry. But I, what I was going to say is, if you work out the statistic...
Thirty-one. Thirty-one percent. And I'm saying as if twenty...
Oh, so you have it. Okay, I was going to do it based on the inhabitants.
Okay.
You've got it, okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
My name is Harold Wasserman. I live here in Camarillo, not Camarillo. And I'm not here to threaten you guys with anything. I'm actually here to praise somebody. You have an employee named John Frazier, who is a genius. I was having terrible, terrible, extremely expensive problems with Frontier Communication. My phones were out three weeks in a row, and they said, "Don't worry, we can have somebody there in 12 days." And so they were obviously concerned about me. I called John...
Well, they didn't want to hear from you again.
Go ahead. Well, I could call anytime during the 12 days, because the very good kind of music you can listen to while you're on hold. And I talked to John, and I said, "Today's my birthday, April 3rd." They told me it would be 12 days from that point, until they could have somebody come out and give me my phone service and my internet back. He said, "That's ridiculous." Forty-two minutes later, a truck pulled up. It took Frontier, and I'm not kidding you, seven or eight minutes to fix the problem. But they were perfectly willing to let me wait 12 days. Now, my phones had already been out for, I'm guessing, two and a half weeks, and, and my internet. And this guy came through, and then they fixed it, and they went out again, three days later, I think. I called them, they said same thing. I called him, and within an hour, they were back, and they fixed it. And now Spectrum is my new provider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No, I'm sorry, even for that, we don't allow clapping. Jean Kohut? Maybe I pronounced it wrong?
You pronounced it correct, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to quote an article, as well as I remember it, from the Ventura County Star on Monday. "Evidently, ICE had a raid from Los Angeles through Ventura and part of Santa Barbara County. They rounded up 200 illegal aliens. Ninety percent of them were criminal aliens. Some of the crimes listed were incest, child cruelty, rape, robbery, attempted murder, illegal possession of firearms, drugs." The list goes on. I can't even remember, it was a long list. Four of those arrested were here in Camarillo. So if we think that our beautiful, lovely, clean city that is basically free of graffiti, basically free of trash in the streets and everything else, and violent crime, that it can't happen here, it can happen here. If we think for a minute that all of the illegal aliens are going to stay in the cities that have opted out, that have become part of the lawsuit, that have taken action themselves, if we think they're going to stay there where they're not protected anymore, I think we're going to be wrong, and we're going to be very sorry. And I would like our city council to please consider the gravity of the situation, and put it on the agenda, so that we can actually get some action, and not just have to keep coming back here and repeating ourselves over and over again about the threat of criminal illegal aliens. These are not people shoplifting in Target. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Council members, my name is Nedra Kindig, and I will make it very short. I'm simply here to urge you to, to refrain from backing this SB 54. Number one, it's illegal. It is against our Constitution. Our country runs by the Constitution. And if every state decided they were going to opt out of what they decided they didn't want to back, it would be chaos. The supremacy clause says in the Constitution that the federal government takes precedence over the state, but somehow California doesn't recognize that. That's all I simply want to say. I would urge you to take a stand against SB 54. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff, is it Burum?
Burum.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, distinguished council members. I agree. God bless you, and God bless all of us. You know, we are in historic times right now. I feel like it's almost the Alamo, or, you know, the bear flag being raised during state in order to secede from Mexico. So let's just realize the big picture of where SB 54 comes in. And that's, by the way, what I would like you to do. Take any and all actions possible to immediately stop supporting SB 54. But here's the big picture. We have at least 30 million illegal aliens in this country. California is the worst offender. Twenty-eight percent come here. By far, we're the worst offender. All right? They come here, and some of them are MS-13. Now, I've heard numerous thousands of deaths from MS-13, but what I think is significant is 30,000 of them are in 40 states. 2,000 of them are right in Los Angeles. All right? So you've got SB 54, it says, "No, our local law enforcement cannot work with federal agencies to control illegal aliens." It said that. Then we've got H.R. 3697 that says, "You can't even deport them." Then you have Motor Voter that says, "Oh, let's register these people." And by the way, we had voter fraud in the last election. Eleven counties had more votes than registrations. What do you think the whole purpose of this invasion of illegal aliens, then we're going to let them vote, then we're going to indoctrinate them by giving them DACA? Right? So what we've got is an illegal, bloodless invasion. And some people will say it's not bloodless, but it is an invasion. And then you put it all together, when they vote, guess what they want? Secession. And that is what this is all about. And you can go on and on and talk about how SB 54 is unconstitutional, it's illegal, it's moral, it's all of those things, but they don't care, because the goal is secession, and when you take away all those other things, nothing else matters. So I'm asking you to take a stand right now. Nip it in the bud. Stop this, stop Motor Voter, and anything else that will close off our borders and protect our people, which is your oath.
Thank you.
God bless you all. Thank you.
Ron Castor?
Could I go at the end?
Sure.
The continuity of the other discussion.
Okay.
Good evening. One of the primary functions of government is the public safety of its citizens. By passing Senate Bill 54, the sanctuary state law, the California Legislature has put us all at risk. But what's new? The California Legislature is more concerned about aiding illegal aliens than they are about protecting law-abiding American citizens. One of the more egregious examples of this is SB 54. We cannot continue to allow the Sacramento politicians to risk the safety and lives of our law enforcement officers and citizens. The Camarillo City Council submitted a letter to the governor last May in opposition to SB 54, and I applaud you for that. Now is the time to take the next step and join the growing number of cities and counties, including Simi Valley just this week, who are challenging this unconstitutional law. Please put "Opt Out SB 54" on your May 9th city council agenda, and show our community, county, and state that you support the rule of law and the rights and safety of our legal residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
You okay?
And when you come up, if the microphone is a little high, it's really movable, so just pull it down, so you can speak right into it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lois Glab, and I'm a Navy pilot's widow and a retired teacher. And I've heard all these arguments tonight, but I guess I'm thinking of my frugal husband, and the reason he would be opposed to this is because it's going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money. All these people are coming from the other 49 states. They will need housing, they have to be fed, and receive medical care, and the children have to be educated. Who's going to pay for all this? The citizens of California. And if the taxes aren't high enough, you know Sacramento is going to raise taxes, and so we're all going to be hurting. And really, California is becoming like a third-world country these days. My daughter and I were driving to L.A. We were hit by a car. She went back and looked at it, the damage, and they rolled down the window, she was almost asphyxiated by the marijuana. We called the police, and the police said, "I can't cite them, because marijuana is legal in California," and the driver did not have insurance. So then I had to pay the deductible to my insurance company, and these two young men drove off scot-free. You know, nobody pays any attention to laws anymore. And that is why I am moving to Nevada. Thank you.
Okay. Herb Holler?
Good evening, council. My name is Herb Holler. I'm an immigrant. I immigrated from New York City. (laughing). 1870, and my parents immigrated from Europe via Ellis Island, way back in the ancient ages. I just want to say, I believe in immigration, but I believe in legal immigration. I believe in the rule of law, and I think the state and the nation should all agree to honor the same laws and enforce them. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Hi, I'm Sally Budd. I'm from Ventura. Many people who come to California are not here seeking a better life in the traditional sense. Many are gang members and criminals. We, the law-abiding citizens of the U.S., already have to deal with juvenile delinquents, violent homeless people, adult criminals. Do we really need another group, who weren't even born here, to add to our fares? As a citizen, I am entitled to the rights and privileges of a free man, who owes allegiance to a government, and is entitled to protection from it. That definition does not apply to an illegal. Why would any of us feel safe in a sanctuary city? That is making us sitting ducks. This, is this how our government protects us? It feels like a crapshoot to go out in your own neighborhood. When one of your own becomes a victim, it will be too late. What are we waiting for?
Hector Moreno? You'll be next, Mr. Boyer. Oh.
Mr. Bruce is here, right? We can go ahead and do it, and then I'll go after you. All right, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you. Good evening.
And I'm over here also, just like the other good citizens of the United States, to stand against this unconstitutional law. I am also, I came also from Mexico, but I came the right way. I took my time, applied for the residency. It took me time, but at the end, they gave it to me. Thank God for that. I became a U.S. citizen in 96. I'm a naturalized U.S. citizen.
Hooray.
And I do stand for law and order. I'm not against immigration. I'm against illegal immigration. They have no right to be in the United States. They cannot prove their presence in the United States legally. Our elected officials are actually putting us in danger to all the citizens of the United States with these people, especially the ones that are coming again. They're coming 1,500 people, a caravan of illegal aliens, that they take it for granted that the United, that the elected officials in California are just going to open the border for them. And they're going to be putting them on our shoulders again to be, they're going to be costing us billions and billions of dollars, which could go to our own American citizens, to our own children, to our own citizens. How can they, how can they do that to us? Why can't they do the right thing and opt out of this unconstitutional SB 54 sanctuary state law? The sanctuary state law supposed to be done for sanctuary for the U.S. citizens to protect us. That is their duty. When they took office, they did, they, they, they did the oath. They, they took the oath of, the oath to protect us, of office, to uphold the Constitution of the United States. And why are our officials doing the opposite? Why are they against the, the United States citizens? You're putting us all in danger. No, that is the wrong thing to do. Stand by law, stand by law and order. Stand against it. I compel you to do it. I exhort you to go ahead and do the right thing. Stand on the right side of the law. You cannot be, being our, our elected official. We put you there where you're at. We, the citizens of the United States, not the illegal aliens. They cannot do nothing like that. They don't have the right, not even to be here. They're breaking the law when they jump the fence, federal immigration laws. They break the law with, with their fake IDs. They're, they're also counterfeits. They break the law when they steal the Social Security numbers of U.S. citizens. They're, they're, they're breaking all kinds of laws.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Bruce Boyer?
My name is Bruce Boyer. I'm candidate for sheriff here in Ventura County. I think the legal situation has been well and made clear. You know your oaths of office. So what I'd like to talk to you about are some of the other consequences, maybe the ugly or unpleasant side. This invasion is a bloodbath. Just today in Sacramento, the sentencing hearing for an evil vermin, illegal alien, was given out death. This illegal alien vermin had been deported twice, after which he returned to this state and he murdered two peace officers in Northern California. And when I'm in Thousand Oaks and I heard Chief Hagel of the Ventura Sheriff's Department be quoted to say, there is no adverse effect on crime with sanctuary state, I go, well, one of us is obviously doing drugs or lying. Upwards of 30,000 Americans have been murdered, killed by people in this country illegally. This is an invasion. Sanctuary state, right now, we have 100,000 illegal alien adults in Ventura County. If we don't stop sanctuary state, they're going to come from the other states. We're going to have 200,000 in what, 12 months? This cowboy's already paying enough taxes. These illegal aliens we have right now account for about half the crime in this county, half the people in federal prison, and about 40 to 50% of the people in state prisons, depending upon how they want to count them. Now, the numbers are getting hard to count because people like Sheriff Dean that you write a check to will not release numbers. So here are some solutions. The Sheriff's Department is getting a check from the taxpayers of Camarillo. It is not to be in rebellion and it is not to ignore the law. These 58 elected sheriffs, on their own, can defeat sanctuary state. Tomorrow morning, Sheriff Dean could say, I am not going to comply with sanctuary state. It is rebellion. I'm going to turn every illegal alien over to ICE. And what's Becerra going to do about it? Well, he doesn't have the guts to do that. That's why I'm running for sheriff. What he is willing to do is risk the lives of his law enforcement officers, who will be killed fighting this invasion, to protect us. And I'm sorry, I'm not interested in being a statistic on a website. I don't want my kids to be statistics on websites, neither do you. Now, maybe somebody thinks they can sit behind a big old safe desk, but the rest of us are out here on the streets. No. This cowboy's not going to be a victim. You're not going to be victims. Let's put it to Sheriff Dean, tell him, you're breaking the law, you don't get a check. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daniel Long?
Howdy.
How's our former employee?
Great.
Life?
Happy.
Bonnie Long?
Mayor and Council. My name's Daniel Long. I've been living in the city of Camarillo since April of 1975. I have only one question for the council, and that is, when will the council make a legal decision on their stand to disavow SB 54? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Roger, is it Alves?
Alves.
I'm sorry, Alves.
It's okay.
Good evening. My name's Roger Alves and my wife and I have had a company here in Ventura County for 38 years, going on 39. Couple of you know us. We employ 150 people in Oxnard, primarily in consumer electronics. And we've been navigating California's legislation for a lot of years. One of the things we're particularly proud of is our employee base, how they've been able to grow their families, how they've been able to prosper with us, all nationalities. We have, come by our place, you'll see so many nationalities from around the world, many Hispanics. Two of them last year were proud to become American citizens. All our employees are legal, but this new Proposition 54, or Bill 54, has a provision in it that we're not allowed to bring, to allow federal agents, ICE or FBI, to come into our building. Now, somehow, we're supposed to stop them if they want to come in. They're supposed to have a warrant. So if they're chasing one of these illegal federal criminals, how are we supposed to stop that? So oftentimes, the criminals know the laws more than we do. So some of the references made here about being a bloodbath and MS-13, they figure it out. I can go hide in that company away from who's chasing me. How do we protect our employees? Picture Walmart or McDonald's and them figuring that out. So I implore you to sue the state against this bill on behalf of all our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Savaya?
Savala.
Savala. Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. Thank you first for your service. The last time I was here was for Constitution Week, and I'll be back again for that. And I was proud to note that Camarillo was the first city last year to do something to acknowledge our Constitution in a very public way, and they were the very first. Now, with SB 54, you won't be the first because Simi Valley already did that on Monday, but you certainly can be the second by putting it on your agenda for next week or for the 9th of May. There are 13 stripes on our flag. They represent the original 13 colonies. There are 50 white stars on a blue background. Which star is California? We don't know. We're not supposed to know because we are the United States of America. We are not California of the United States. That said, I've heard and read that Thousand Oaks said that it's not their business because immigration is a federal purview. The reality is that when California passed SB 54 and the governor signed it, they made it the local issue because they were doing something unconstitutional. And the fact that they have gone up against their oaths of office does not mean that any of the others have to do, follow suit. So I implore you, please, honor your Constitution like you did last year and like I hope you'll do again this year, and honor your citizens and protect us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matthew Lorimer?
I have three comments. You know, you're public servants. I talked about contract, conflict of interest about Ms. Craven. You know, you went to a Habitat event. It wasn't a city grand opening. It was, it was basically to raise money. It's a conflict of interest when you voted for that for $100,000 for a nonprofit. No councilman should be voting for any kind of money for any nonprofit or anything if they're going to events raising money. It's wrong, plain wrong. And that's why, if you believe in term limits, go to the farmer's market, you can sign at 8 to 12. The next thing I want to talk about is mad. April 21st, 2018, Mothers Against Drunk Driving. You know, we lost an officer a few years ago. The city hands out permits for alcohol all the time. What I'm asking for the city council to do is put on the agenda, we need five more sobriety checkpoints a year in this city. You know, DUIs are unacceptable. It seems to be a trend. It's wrong. And it's time that the city council add additional sobriety checkpoints, five more a year. It should be on the agenda. It's unacceptable. The fact is that people drinking and driving, each generation doesn't know the boundaries and needs to be constantly reminded. It's your job, you're public servants. It's time to act before it gets worse. The next thing I want to talk about is sanctuary city. This is about basically the rule of law. You know something? If you commit a crime and something happens, you're supposed to take care of it. But our sheriffs, you have a contract with the Sheriff's Department. Basically, what it says is they're not going to do anything about it because the governor has designed, decided not to enforce the law. And you know something? It's wrong. That's what this is really about. It's a fact is, I don't think people against other people moving to this country. That's what this country's about. It's a great country. But when you commit a crime, that's why we hire officers and they need to uphold the law. But when a governor decides to decide for everybody that we're not going to follow the law because he wants new voters on the roll, it's wrong. That's not the way this country works. And you know something? The people in the audience are here tonight because they're tired of it. They don't want crime in their neighborhoods. And across California, it's absolutely wrong that basically the governor's decided that we're not going to enforce the law and therefore, that's where we're at. You're a city council. You need to have backbone and you need to put it on your agenda. Whether you're for it or against it, you need to put it on the agenda. The people don't want sanctuary cities and it's time for you to take a stand. The people here have asked for you to put it on the agenda. It's time you grow up and put it on the agenda. No more excuses, no more waiting weeks. It's up to you. You're, you were voted in office and it's time to take that action. Put it on the agenda and let's hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Gloria Massey-Chinea?
My name is Gloria Massey-Chinea and I'm a citizen of California naturally and the county of Ventura. It's a pleasure being here and thank you for hearing what I have to say. I'd like to share that, as you know, the Constitution is our GPS, correct? So let's do an exercise. We have 10 fingers. Five fingers, move them. Five times tells us that we have the right to vote. In four different amendments in our Constitution, and it's for you and for me. So it gives us 10 times, 10 fingers, and we use them five times to vote, four amendments for you and for me. It is our GPS. Many of you know what Election Integrity Project California is all about. Election Integrity Project is a project, is a nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3). EIP has a place in your desk, in your home, at the table. Everyone needs to be aware of Election Integrity Project California. Everyone in Ventura County should be involved with Election Integrity Project because what we are wanting is fair and honest elections. So without free and fair and honest elections, all desks will disappear and all tables will disappear. We need help. Camarillo needs to say, I am present. I ask you, each one of you, from the city manager, council member, your mayor, city attorney, to have someone call me, 805-236-6626, and get someone to volunteer to observe the polls. This is your opportunity as a citizen to be part of the movement and to be part of the solution and to be, not be part of the problem. I am Gloria Massey-Chinea. I approve this message and I expect that all of you call my number, 805-236-6626, and I'd like to have representation from the city of Camarillo. Thank you very much and it's a pleasure being here.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you. Ron Kester? It's the last one I have, Mr. Kester.
I'm Ron Kester. I live in Camarillo, Camarillo Springs. I've talked to you all many times before. Okay? And I guess what I'm going to say is a little anticlimactic. It has nothing to do with everything else. What I really wanted to do on behalf of the residents of Camarillo Springs, I'm the President Homeowners Association in Camarillo Springs. And so for the probably almost 3,000 residents that are in Camarillo Springs, especially the Springs, those 600 residents, we all wanted to come here and personally thank you for all that you've done on our behalf in helping us recover from the mudslide and the debris flows back in 2013 and 2014. It has been amazing. People are moving back into their homes. Property values are coming back. Homes are being rebuilt. None of this would have happened without the support that you have shown us and you staying by our sides and having our back through the whole process. We appreciate it very, very much. You know, I wish I could go take 15 minutes and go by, down by names, but you know, all the council people and Bill Little before, and the interest that you've shown, Dave, Norman always having his office door open when we come in, Dave Klotzel, Tom Fox, Joe Vaca, their staff, Renee helping us get the red tags off so we could even clear rock. Okay? And Rick Knack, you know, sticking by us with project manager and helping, helping things. Bruce helping us navigate a couple of touchy areas on what's the best thing to do and the best way to handle a certain, certain thing so we could get things accomplished in a, in a timely manner. You know, it's been three years now, three and a half years. And I brought a picture, this is from our news sheet, The Springs Times. And if you, all of you have been there and you remember what it looked like. You know, the mud and the rock and the K rails and now what it looks like is the meadow. Okay? Where the, the road was, now people are actually stopping and taking pictures of the wildflowers. So that was a great call on the, on the part, part of landscaping that you had done, Dave. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate it, okay? But now I think we're about 90% recovered. The last homes are being, being completed. Some of them are for resale, some moving back in. But over this whole process, we just wanted to thank you very much on behalf of everyone who lives in Camarillo Springs for the support that you've given us, for the financial support that you've given us. I know the city invested a lot of money in that, and we appreciate it as citizens of Camarillo. And just wanted to give a personal thank you to, to all of you on behalf of all of the residents of Camarillo.
Thank you, Mr. Kester. Pardon the pun, but it's been kind of a rocky road.
To say the least.
But I'm happy to hear that it's all worked out and that you're happy.
Oh, it's wonderful. Oh, and Dave, my wife wanted to convey to you and to Dave and to Rick that she loves what you've done with the landscaping and the, and the road. You know, that was one of the things, we didn't put it in writing, but it was the understood there is, for the landscaping, you don't have to make us happy, you have to make my wife happy.
Your Honor.
Thank you.
Your Honor, one thing for Mr. Kester.
Yes.
What's funny is, last year and the year before, we had decent rains. We'd always check with staff, how are they doing out there? We did, to see, see if anything came down. And this year, when we had that three day time, we had pretty good rain. Now, nothing came down. That shows you where all the vegetation grew back and the flowers grew up, which we said it would happen. No one believed it, but it's all there. And now people go out and take pictures of it.
Yeah, it's absolutely beautiful. And we really felt kind of lonely last big rain, so we didn't have the fire department, we didn't have the sheriff's department, we didn't have the TV crews.
But we were there, watching.
Yes, you were. We opened up the clubhouse for emergency, and we had to eat all the donuts and drink all the coffee. But Sheriff's Department, Office of Emergency Services, Fire Department, you know, every department within the city of Camarillo, either contracted or not contracted, went out of their way to help us, and we appreciate that so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all the cards I have. I have quite a few nonverbal cards. We'll make sure all of the council members get to see them. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak to us on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, raise your hand, come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to the rest of our agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we put.
Oh, we need, yes?
Yes.
I don't know that we can have a motion.
I'm referral. I'd like to directly refer.
We can have direction, we can have.
Okay.
But we can't have a motion because it's not on the agenda.
No motion. I'd like to refer this to our next meeting or whenever the city attorney feels he's prepared to come back and give us some options on this SB, this, this thing, and let you know I, I'm very much against that.
Mr.?
But that, and so is this council. We've already said we were. But I'd like to put it on our calendar for the next time, or this one after.
Ah. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, what I can do, and it'll take some research, obviously. There are lawsuits pending, as has been mentioned by many of the speakers, one by the United States government. I know the city of Huntington Beach filed a lawsuit earlier this month. So we'll need to do some research with respect to the requirements of SB 54 and also the impact of how SB 54 would affect the city of Camarillo. And we can complete that research, and I'll let, let the council know as soon as that's been completed and available to be on your agenda.
Okay, so stay tuned. It will be on the agenda sometime soon. Just a minute. Mr. Kildee.
Yeah, Brian, the impacts.
Speak into the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me? The impacts, what will they?
Speak into your mic.
What would that constitute, the impacts?
I'm sorry, we still have a council member going.
Let him leave first, Charlotte.
Well, Kevin was talking on this.
But there's noise. They're leaving. You wait five, two minutes, and you'll be able to talk.
Can you hear me okay?
Okay, we're continuing with our meeting, so could you please continue your conversations out in the foyer?
Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Kildee.
Brian, the criteria that you're going to look into, do you have anything that you're prepared to discuss on that, the criteria that you're going to look at?
Well, specifically, SB 54 has certain requirements.
I'm having a hard time hearing.
I can't hear you, Kevin, down here.
Excuse me, could you carry on your conversations in the foyer? We're trying to conduct a meeting.
I think I'm going to have to get outside.
Well, they're just standing there.
Did you hear me, counsel?
Yeah, I did. I was just waiting for them to kind of quiet down.
I don't think the rest of us heard you, Mr. Kildee. Could you repeat what you asked?
Yes, I was merely asking what the criteria that you will, and I know it's a little bit early, the criteria that you'll be looking at when you come back.
Yeah, what I intend to do is research SB 54 to identify the requirements of SB 54. And then in addition to analyzing the requirements of SB 54, which is a state law, I would also do an analysis of how SB 54 would impact the, and how it affects the city of Camarillo. So that would be the research that would be done.
Will you give us some options at that time also?
Yes, we can include options if that's your direction.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else on this topic?
I'm assuming we hear three people who want that.
Yes.
That direction.
No, I turned my mic on. Basically, what I'm asking is, is there more than one that want that to bring back?
Well, I think we're not voting on this.
We're getting direction and direction.
And our policy says that any council member can ask that something be put on the agenda. So we don't need three to vote on it.
Well, I guess I was making my point, excuse me.
Could I maybe put this into one's statement and see whether or not this is what I, the direction is? What I've written down is that I will be doing the research and return to the council with a discussion of the requirements of SB 54 with the, how SB, secondly, how SB 54 affects the city of Camarillo, and thirdly, what options are available to the city with regard to SB 54. So I would just ask if I get some confirmation that that's the direction.
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Item A, municipal stormwater MPDES management permit. How fitting that it's tonight, when Anita just retired.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. That is one of the results of handing out that tile. You're stuck with me giving you this report this year. I'll try to be as sweet and smiley as previous reports. This is the annual resolution authorizing the county board of supervisors to continue the levy of an assessment of $5 per what we call the benefit assessment unit, which is equal to a single detached housing unit, and this will be for fiscal year 2018-19. The BAUs will remain basically the same level as last year, approximately 31,241 units, generating $156,205 for the coming fiscal year. We are under an extension of the existing, which was the third countywide stormwater NPDES permit, which had expired in July of 2015. It's not administrative extension, and we are expecting to see a draft of the next permit being released later this year. And we're continuing to operate under the existing permit, and this $5 per parcel fee will generate, as I mentioned, about the $156,000, and which will partially offset our cost, which is approximately 1.4 million of administrating the Camarillo stormwater program. And, and those, the costs and the revenue are reflected in the budget for 2018-19 that we're putting together. So that concludes my report, unless council has any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Kildee.
I'm going to ask something kind of rhetorical. Do they have any idea the total cost to implement these policies? And I just ask that because, I mean, $156,000 is a lot of money, but it costs us a whole lot more to implement this. And I'm just curious as to whether or not there's been any thought that, you know, what's the total cost to implement these kind of policies? And I'm not making a statement, or I'm just asking you if you have any information on that.
Well, I mean, as I stated, our average, typical cost and what we budget for is roughly about 1.4 million annually to administer this program at this point. There are expected to be increased costs as the new permits come out, the new additional requirements that, that we're going to be faced with. You know, there have been some dollar amounts estimated for that out into the future. Some of the compliance dates are 20 years out to comply with some of the legislation and the, the permit requirements out there. But, you know, the, the total cost and on out into the future is in the multiple millions of dollars. But right now, we're faced with an annual program of the 1.4 million that this assessment contributes roughly, you know, 10% of that cost.
And that fee is pretty well locked in, isn't it, Dave? It really doesn't change too much, does it?
That's correct, right. It's set and established, and this was prior to Prop 218. So any, any change or adjustment to that would have to go through a Prop 218 compliant effort.
Yeah, that's going to be, that would be a challenge, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. I don't have any cards, but I'll open the public hearing. I'll ask the city clerk if she has any cards. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the council on this item? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the, the public hearing.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the $5 assessment per BAU for inclusion of the benefit assessment program of the Ventura County Watership Protection District.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go back to city manager. Item A, city policy 7.01, general plan amendments, non-city initiated amendment. We have a report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At its meeting of March 28th, 2018, Councilmember Trembley asked that the Policy Committee review policy 7.01, general plan amendments, non-city initiated, to consider adding language regulating circumstances upon which a council member may ask that a general plan amendment referral be rescinded. On April 9th, 2018, the Policy Committee reviewed the policy and discussion centered around the current ability of a single council member to request council's consideration of rescinding a general plan referral regardless of how the council member voted on the approved referral. The Policy Committer, Committee considered the rules regarding reconsideration of a council decision as established by Rosenberg, Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which are the parliamentary rules generally applied by the city council, in which reconsideration of a previous decision by the council may only be requested by a council member who voted to affirm the decision during the same council meeting. The Policy Committee believes the same principle should apply, and that is, only those council members who affirmed the approval of a general plan referral should have the ability to ask for consideration of its rescission. Also of concern to the Policy Committee is the ability of a single council member to ask for consideration of rescission. Although developers solely bear the, all the financial obligation and risk of completing the GPA referral process, it is important for developers to have confidence in the council's decision to let them proceed in proving their concept and the need for a general plan amendment. As such, the Policy Committee recommends that in order for the council to consider rescission of a previously approved referral, two council members who had affirmatively voted to approve the referral would be required to effectively make the constitution of rescission request. The, the, the language, the proposed language is before you in the policy, and it's clearly shown in the red line version, which is an added new section which reads, "Two members of the city council can request that a previously approved general plan amendment referral be reviewed by the city council for possible rescission, but only if each council member affirmatively voted to refer the original general plan amendment referral request."
Any questions?
Thank you.
Mrs. McDonald.
I'd like to know, first of all, I don't know anywhere in our policies, and I, and I say that, and I did not check every word of every policy we have, but I don't recall anywhere where we tell two council members to go out and make the decision to request something other than through our, our policies, our standing committees, or, or, or ad hoc committees. So I would like to know when these two members of the city council get together to decide they want to ask for that, and can that be done at any time during the year?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Your, your policy now says two members of the city council can request. The proposed policy. The proposed policy. Two city council members can request that a previously approved general plan amendment referral is for rescission. Okay, when do those two city council members get together to decide they want to do that?
They don't necessarily need to get together to do that.
So then you would say that one person brings it forward and somebody else agrees? Is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
And can it be done at any time during the year?
Yes, it could.
If the action hasn't taken place, we're going to take.
Just, just to make sure, Mr. City Attorney, if two council members did get together out in the back or in an office or at a restaurant or wherever, it's not breaking the Brown Act or anything, is it?
It is not.
Question?
Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, if they got together, but it's been a while now, because she was asking about timeframe, and you've got to get that clear. If you go into a timeframe and someone's made some commitment of dollars and other things based on your decision, let's say it's eight months later, they're getting ready, they're coming in, doing the plan and so on, and it may, had a commitment made to others for money, et cetera, how would that be affected to this kind of a, you've got to have some sort of a guideline?
Well, I think the issue before you this evening is the policy change, proposed policy change, which would require that the two council members who voted for the referral would need to request that it come back for reconsideration. To respond to your question, the policy also provides that the council may take action with regard to a general plan referral at any time. Obviously, the issue of, you know, whether they've spent money and reliance on the referral is an issue to consider when you're evaluating, you know, whether to change the action that's already been approved. However, that doesn't mean that you lose your jurisdiction to take action.
I am, if you're done with questions, I have a couple of comments.
Well, let's see if there are any other questions. Okay?
You know, this came about, I guess I'm going to say quite innocently because we've had somewhat of a procedure that the council has followed over the years. And once a year, we review the general plan amendment referrals, and it's at that point in time where we have traditionally been the time where we talk about whether to go forward, whether there's any issues, and we've never had anything in place that says that one person couldn't ask for it. Now, in the past, what has happened in that conversation, usually the mayor or in the past, the city manager has asked the question, would, is there a consensus that that occur? In other words, not because one council member asked for it or two council members asked for it. In, in the past, it's been, there are at least three of you who wish to hear that or to have that agenda item brought back. And to me, what happened at the last meeting, I think we all got so up in the conversation about the general plan referral that was being rescinded, that I don't think we talked enough about that one, and no one objected, and so staff put it on the agenda. I actually think that we need to, rather than paragraph, that we need to simply put in writing what our practice has been, and it is, what our practice has been is actually probably more strict than what's being proposed. Because in the past, and as I say, it was a matter of there being somewhat of a consensus that three of you would want to hear it, and then you'd have, you know it'd be least worthwhile. I mean, I can see also the situation. I mean, I can see also the situation where, depending upon the change of the council, you could actually end up not having two members of a city council who even approved a general plan referral, because it takes years sometimes to go through the process. We have an election in November, we could have three new city council members sitting here in December. You could actually have a situation where you couldn't apply by, abide by what you're proposing. And it does indeed take years sometimes to go through, and I think the city council has probably the best example that I can think of, and that is Caneo Creek, where the council allowed something to go on for years and years and years, and they spent, I believe, millions of dollars on these studies, and then the council did indeed rescind it. Wouldn't it have been better if indeed there were three people who had questions about it, had that discussion early on, and basically cut their losses and not had it drag on for years and years? So you can take both sides of it. But it seems to me that if we go back and we put into place basically what we were doing, it is actually in some ways more restrictive, but it leaves it in the hands of the city council. So what I would propose is, if you go to big page seven, I believe, make sure I got the right page here. Big page seven, last paragraph on that page, paragraph E, where it says, "Annual Review", and I would propose that we change that paragraph to read, "Annual Review", change the first three words, honor before, I would use the word "at". That now requires that at that second meeting, we will review the, what's outstanding. Then that paragraph, the rest of that sentence stands. I would add the sentence that says, "If in the course of the annual review, there is a consensus by three members of the city council to consider rescension of a referral, staff will be directed to prepare such agenda item." Now it puts it back to, you're guaranteeing there's a review, you're also saying that the council, three people making a direction, now you've actually put it in the hands of that city, city council to make a determination. And in some ways, it's stricter than what you're even proposing.
Let me tell you why I disagree with that.
I mean, can I?
You wanted to know what she said?
No, I'll just like make a comment, but if you want to make the comment.
I'd like to make a comment, because I'm on the committee, and I think it's important that before we start talking about it, that would mean, excuse me, that every single thing that's ever been sent off for general, possible, for a general plan review, would then be revoted on every January.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yes, it would, because everybody'd be sitting up here trying to, trying to talk about it. I think that leaving it the way the committee recommended is by far the better way.
Well, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying, because I'm not saying you vote on anyone. I'm saying that we have the review, which is already in the policy, although changing the honor before to "at the meeting" means it's done at the meeting, and not just a report that no one in the audience, or anywhere at home, or anyone else sees. That's a transparency thing. What I'm saying is, if when reviewing that, if there's somebody, doesn't matter who it is, somebody has an issue, you can have brand-new information that you didn't know about when you did the referral. Something can totally change, and that discussion needs to take place. You can have a referrals that everybody's good with, and then you see it progressing, you leave it alone. But if one person sitting here has information to provide, that person would have to convince two other people that to at least bring it back.
One.
No, you'd have to do two, because I'm saying do three people, not two people.
Under your thing, okay.
Under mine. It's actually more restrictive. I'm not saying you, every meeting you re-vote on, or every year you re-vote on them.
Sure sounds to me the way you ordered it, that that's what you want.
If in the course of an annual review, if.
That's yearly.
No, you're having, you're already having the annual review. We do that anyway. That's already in the policy. So I'm saying the time.
We've already voted on?
Every year, every year, paragraph E says, right now it says, "Annual Review, honor before the second meeting in January, staff will present a report to the city council on the status of each general plan amendment referral." Why are you doing that?
But that's just, that's just in the staff report. That doesn't mean that we re-decide on it.
Who's saying you re-dedecide it? We're looking at it. They're giving us a review. I'm saying that is the only time that you ask to have a referral rescinded. It's at that meeting when we're all sitting here together, talking about it.
Counsel, may, may I offer something here? If you look at paragraph F, and I want to kind of bring you back a few years when we introduced paragraph F. Paragraph F is the triennial review and decision whether to rescind, and it states that every three years, after the date on which a general plan amendment application was referred to staff for study, staff will present to city council an agenda item that reports on the status of the referral and presents a suggested action to either continue the study of the general plan amendment or rescind the referral. And the reason we offer that language and a three-year timeframe is because generally, we can get through a general plan amendment in about two years. Caneo Creek was, was the anomaly. It was, it was the, the, the big difference. But generally, on, on your average GPA, we can get through that GPA referral in two years, at the most, three years. And so, but, you know, bringing it, having that, having that, that option of, of knowing as a developer that you could be rescinded within a year, you know, it, there's.
But read what you're, read what you're saying in G. You're saying two members of the city council can do it anytime. I'm saying at least you only do it once a year. This new paragraph says at any time, two members of the city council can get together on their own and decide to bring it back.
I understand what you're saying. So, you know, maybe.
Anytime?
Well, you know, maybe, well, maybe then, you know, if, well, I see Tony's hand up over there, and, but, you know, if you can, I think, with the current policy, I think we need to be really clear about what, what is the objective of the annual review? And the annual review for years was only about, hey, you know, every, every second week in January, if we have referrals to bring forward, we're going to bring forward the new referrals. Oh, and by the way, these are the other referrals we're working on, so please be considerate of our resources, because we may not be able to, we may not have the resources to take on more general plan amendments, because we have all these other things we're working in. It wasn't intended for council to take a second bite at the apple at that point, a year later. So then we offer paragraph F, which is a triennial review that makes it, that makes it very clear that on the third year, this is your chance to rescind this thing. By that time, you know, the developer has been working on his GPA amendment. He's been doing the studies, been spending serious money. This thing's either going to be a real deal, or it's not by three years. And, but he's not in jeopardy every year to have it taken out from under him.
So why, when Mr. Trembley asked to consider rescinding the general plan referral on the Shop Kmart project, did you tell him the time to do that? Would we be in January, when we reviewed the, the general plan referrals? Exactly what you told him.
Is that what I told him?
That's what you told him. Exactly what you told him. Now, I can, I can go another way with this, if, if, if we're going to argue, I can do another thing, and let's just say that under number F, we add that language to F instead of E, and get rid of G. I think.
What language?
That, that it takes three of you for a consensus to bring it back.
You need a timeframe, folks. I'm sorry, go ahead, Tony.
I'm not talking about it.
Okay, I'm going to let Mr. Trembley have the floor.
Well, first of all, when I asked for consideration of the rescission on the Kmart application, number one, I had voted for that referral in the first place, as opposed to the situation, Mrs. McDonald, where you had voted against, the other one where you asked to bring it back. Number two, what I asked for was absolutely consistent with the policy that existed for this council.
So was mine.
But so was mine, and I did nothing, did nothing wrong. The problem I have with.
Well, you were looking at a different policy.
Well, but.
You named a different policy, not this one.
But I, but I read, as a lawyer, I read both those policies together, and that's the conclusion I came up with, and I think it had merit, and the council agreed, and so there we go. The, one of the difficulties I have with what you're suggesting, Mrs. McDonald, under E, is then, so let's take a hypothetical. There's a referral, an affirmative referral on a 3-2 vote. The next January, 12 months later, any three council members, including two who opposed that referral, could then combine with a new council member, who during the campaign, ostensibly, also opposed that referral. So you have a situation where you have someone who, a developer, who has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on a referral during the course of the last 12 months, all of a sudden is undermined, and that referral is now gone. That's an issue of fairness that we talked about during the last discussion on this at Camino Reason. That's why I can't support it, because hypothetically, that would allow for members who opposed that referral to all of a sudden, one year later, say, "Ah, that referral is now gone." I don't think that's fair.
That's right.
To put someone in that, in that position. I do think it's fair, if you have two council members who affirmatively voted in favor of that referral, to say, "Hey, wait a minute, we want to reconsider that." In fact, and that's more than actually where I came from, because I was only the one, only one council member who asked for that consideration on the Kmart matter. So it's actually strengthening what, or being more restrictive on than what I was able to do.
Can I ask you a question? If, if you say.
Microphone.
If you say that, and I, I understand that, I understand a developer goes forward, and it's not fair to pull a rug out from under them.
You understand my hypothetical.
I, I understand your hypothetical.
And you agree that hypothetical is true.
I, I agree, it could be, but worse than that, worse than that, under your scenario, you now have three council members who basically say, "We're, we don't want, support this." Why allow them to continue to spend money when they get to the end and it doesn't get approved? Now, they're.
Shoot, they could ask two new council members again by the time that's over.
Well, look at the.
Not if they just, under his scenario, they just got elected. But see, that, what I'm saying, that it's actually.
I'm hypothesizing about your scenario and the language you put, the language you put in. Well, no, because if you take, look, the, as I understand, the referral process, when a referral is made, that is absolutely no guarantee that that project is ever going to be approved by this council. It only tells that developer, "You've got a green light to go ahead and perform the studies that we believe are necessary to bring it back," but there's zero guarantee under the language you're, you provided, that would even lessen the chance for that referral to be completed. It's not more restrictive, it's actually less restrictive than what we, what the Policy Committee is suggesting be put in place.
Actually, the Policy Committee is saying that any time, any time during the year, any year, two members can ask to have it rescinded.
Two members who voted for it. Read it. I know what it says.
Not, not any two members.
And you juxtapose that against, against paragraph F as well.
That's why I'm saying.
And you already have those protections under the triennial review.
I'm saying then, if you don't want to put it in E, put it in F, that any member can participate in that discussion, because under my scenario, you may not even have two members who voted yes by the time it gets to your triangle.
And it would go to the triennial review, because at the triennial review, any, everybody's going to talk about it. Everybody would be up here.
But under G, you're saying unless, you can't ask for it to come back, you can't participate in, in voting to have it come back unless you voted yes.
We're not talking about during the triennial review.
So what are you talking, that's one of my first questions. When is this? When do those two members have the opportunity to always bring it back? This is where I, what started me on all this thing. Actually, I'm fighting for more restrictions than what you're, you're presenting.
Well, actually, your language provides for less restrictions.
No, because it takes three.
No, you're wrong. It, yeah, but.
Three votes pass something, two votes don't pass.
But utilize the hypothetical, like, again, you, it's actually less restrictive, and it undermines the referral process more.
Can I jump in here? Because I'm not, I'm not, Tony, forgive me, I'm not following that. You know, three is a bigger number than two. I kind of, I kind of like what I'm hearing here, that why can't we say that, you know, three members have to vote, that, you know, and they may have voted in the affirmative, may not, if we have an election and there's new members here. But if you're going to bring up some new information, it better be good information, or you're not going to be able to convince three members.
How about?
Three is stronger than two here.
How about if we did something else? Under annual review, go back to big page seven, because when we talked in, I think I'm right in this, Mr. Trembley, when we talked in committee meeting, we were not talking during the triennial review.
That's correct.
That has nothing to do with it. I mean, that comes up anyway, and at the triennial review, it can be nixed. Any vote has to have three people, because this is everything and this is nothing. So you don't need three, you're going to have to have three to, to make a decision on it. But go back to big page seven, E, annual review, honor before the second, okay, we can make that "at."
That way, we know it's going to happen.
Okay. Well.
Honor before, because there might be some other reason to have it at the first meeting in January.
Yeah, there could be an exigency to where we may not have this at the second meeting in January. Generally, we do, we plan on it, but, you know, life happens.
I guess what I want, what I read that on, "At" meaning you're going to present it at a meeting and just not hand us a report. That's what I'm after with the word "at." So you could say "at the," in other words, the way it's written right now, you could simply write us a report. You're going to present a report.
No, it says, "On or before the second meeting." It could happen the first meeting in January.
Keep reading.
Staff will present a report to the city council, but it still says "at, on a meeting."
It doesn't say "on the meeting." It says, "at a, before the second meeting." That's a timeframe.
Well, excuse me, but you were on the committee that developed this policy, and now you don't like your own words.
Actually, I'm trying to tighten it up. You're tightening something else up.
No, I'm talking about the rest of it. So let me finish to where I thought this should go. "Report to the city council on the status of each general plan amendment referral." At that time, two members of the city council, and then let's put in a little expression there, two members of the city council who voted to refer the, is that original? I'm, I'm not seeing that word right. Original general plan amendment referral request, can request that a previously approved general plan amendment referral be reviewed by the city council for previous rescission. So now we're telling you, you can only do it once a year at that meeting.
I like that part of it. And then how do you address the year you don't have two people who voted affirmatively?
Well, then I guess you're not going to bring it back for rescission until the, the triennial review, when any people can do it.
Can I ask a hypothetical of the city attorney? If we had this situation where you had new council members, so you, you no longer had the two, two council members that originally had put that out.
Well, three of them, it took three of them to do it.
Right, but as time goes on, if it goes on for years, you could have.
Okay, I'll be gone if it goes on for years. If it does, not that your staff will recommend it be, not, never mind.
Well, theoretically, under the.
Well, under, after three years, it'll be back for everybody. Nobody has to ask for it to come back after three years.
But what if the people that were left voted no, and the three people that, the three people that voted no are still left, and the three people that voted yes are gone?
In the interim two years.
I ask my hypothetical.
In the interim two years, it wouldn't be asked to be brought back, as I understand it.
If at that point, or any time during that time when the council has changed, so you no longer have two votes that voted affirmatively, what action could the council take? Could the council actually request it because they, that we no longer can meet that criteria?
Well, Section D, you might want to look at that.
Okay.
So in other words, the, the three new people could say, "Okay, we want to bring it back now," and you could cause the vote before it's finished?
Well, I'm just reading what it says in Section D, which is that the council is not precluded from considering or acting upon general plan amendments at such times as they deem advisable, nor precluded from initiating general plan amendments as they deem necessary and appropriate. So, in terms of timing, it's saying at such times as they deem advisable, so that could be any time. And when it says, "Acting upon." And when it says, um, acting upon general plan amendments, in my opinion, that could mean approving a referral or rescinding a referral. And then I guess we...
I don't believe that's what D was meant to say. Maybe we need to send it back to committee and just rework it.
Yeah, I, I don't know that that is or wasn't...
I know what it was for. It was so that in January, when something came before us, then we could, and we've done it before, where I think Camp Springs...
Bring it back.
Bring it back in June.
So the reason, the reason I bring up section D is because it could be interpreted the way that I'm interpreting it.
Only by attorneys.
Well, I mean, developers have attorneys too, so I think that, I think that what we've probably learned from this discussion is that it might need to be further reviewed for considering how section D impacts the review process and the potential rescission process.
Would we also want to make that a date specific to be consistent? Or would we want to leave it open-ended?
Well, I don't, I, I think sometimes certain things happen and, you know, there could be a big flood or an earthquake and maybe they can't do it the second meeting in January. I think you can't just say then and no other time of the year.
Well, could, could I interject for just, um, I believe that the part of the procedure that needs to be considered is that you do have, I believe, a policy that allows a council member to request an item to be put on a future agenda.
Right.
And since that allows one council member to do that, and since you've got section D that says that you could consider it at any time, then if you put those two together, in theory, that council member, one council member could ask for the item to become back in June for consideration, so...
Well, that's what D was for.
I understand, but, understood, but the D doesn't have a limitation on how many need to make that request.
So under my scenario, when there weren't any left, as long as there was one that had approved, that that person could bring it back.
Let's send it back to the council, the committee, and let's send the other one back to the committee and make them jive.
You know, one, I got to tell you something real quick because I'm listening to this and going, if I were a builder, and I got things really kind of rolling, but things happen. Maybe it's a flood, maybe it's something else, maybe it's when the economy went flat in 2008 and everyone backed off from doing anything. And then you come back and, and, and say, "No, you can't have it anymore. You better have some good reasons or you're going to open yourself up for a suit." I mean, real good reasons.
Which is exactly why I said it takes three.
Well, I mean, I don't mean that three. I'm talking about even three do it, they're going to open themselves up for a suit. If you've got somebody that's been started on it, spent money, and now you're going to say no after they've been through some situation like the bad economy?
I'll ask the city attorney, but it was my understanding that this is the one time where we have total discretion and we tell them to do it with no expectation. So I don't know how they'd win that one, but I'm not an attorney, so...
Well, your, the policy on big page six does indicate that in section A three, that the guidelines are intended to establish, to be aided in review, but that fulfillment of the criteria does not assure ultimate approval. And the city does have discretion with respect to whether to approve the general plan amendment. As we all know, this isn't the approval of the amendment, this is just taking action with regards to the referral.
But if they're working, if they're working on something already and got some stuff accomplished and also have spent a lot of money, and now you turn and say, "I'm sorry, can't do it."
Well, I think those are reasons, Mr. Morgan, why this, as I understand it, this policy, this proposed amendment was coming back so that there was some greater assurance with respect to that, but...
It would still take three, even if one person asked to bring it back, it takes three to vote to have it happen, so...
It, it does, but then there's a discussion about it and there's the question of whether or not it's being referred or not.
Is there any objection to sending this back to committee?
No, send it back.
I, I don't see it being passed tonight, so, uh, okay, there's no objection, so we will send it back to committee.
May I ask a request of staff though, when we have our annual review? Whether you like or not the fact that it was brought back to us, when the developer brought back the information at that night when there was a potential of a rescission, whether it would have happened or not, they provided us much better information. I think it was very helpful for the council and personally, I think it was very helpful for the developer.
But you still voted against it.
Well, that, at that point in time, it became a matter of...
It didn't make any difference.
As soon as you start attacking me, I tend to do things like that. But it actually, I think it was helpful. So I would ask that when we do a review, give us a little bit more than, "They're in this stage, they're in this stage, and this stage." Let them have the opportunity to just tell us what's going on. And then they got, I think they got some really good feedback when they came. So you may look at it as a bad thing, it actually may turn out to be a very good thing.
Okay, I, I think we can have that discussion when we bring this back.
Yep.
Uh, next item is under city clerk, the minutes. Mr. Tremblay, I'm not sure I understood, I'm not sure anybody understood what it was you were bringing back with item A and the minutes, so...
Well, Mrs. McDonald requested revisions to the minutes and those are the ones that were handed out in the, in the red form and...
Okay.
I don't think that the revisions accurately reflect what occurred and the revisions that have been asked for, sections or sentences...
Let the rest of us find our revisions.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Let me know when you're ready to go.
And if I'm wrong, it was my understanding that's what occurred. I remember specifically asking the question and I remember it was a three, four, A, yay or nay of proceeds?
Why don't you let me finish, okay? The third and fourth sentences are inconsistent in terms of the proposed revision. What I think it should say, if you want to say, is Mayor Craven, Councilmember Morgan, and Councilmember Tremblay did not support, strike the word "any," simply say, "did not support further discussion of campaign finance reform at this time." Because the last sentence, which is accurate, "The council supported reevaluating the need for campaign reform measures after the new software has been implemented for a year or two." What we said is, "Let's implement that new software and then we can revisit it." But the way these, this revised language was put in place inferred otherwise, so I would object to that as not being accurate.
I, I will go, I, I have no problem, I'll change that, although I don't remember the question being asked exactly the way you phrased it, but I have no problem with changing it the way you proposed.
So just to be clear, I would strike the word "any" from the fourth sentence and I would add the words at the end of that sentence, "at this time."
I, I have no problem with that.
Okay, then I'm...
And then are you leaving the next sentence with the change?
I'm, I'm fine.
There was an existing sentence and there's a change in it, so just to be clear.
Well, it was just explaining what the need was. It didn't...
Well, it was partially...
Probably your, your better thing to do there is to add, if Mrs. McDonald's willing to do it, just say, instead of campaign reform measures, you just say campaign finance reform measures and add the word finance.
We need to add the word finance, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would do to make it, make it clear.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Before it just said need and it was like, "What need?"
Yeah, I know.
Jeffrey, did you get this? Okay, so we have not approved the minutes yet. With those changes...
I'll move approval.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so as far as I have down, we are now ready to start, uh, council, or comments...
Mrs. Ma, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I also had a question on H.
Did we skip something?
I'm sorry.
H, I'm sorry.
We already approved it, didn't we?
That's right, administrative services.
Mine's just a technical question is all.
Okay, certainly. Consent H.
I started looking at the total contract, 171,240, and that's not for a new air conditioning unit. That's just the total cost of the contract, is that right?
It would be amended to that amount, yes.
Right, that's not what we're paying for one HVAC unit?
No, no, it's not.
That's, I just needed that clarification.
But they could cost that much, how big they are. I see them all that time coming through.
We're not talking about a little window unit. This is for maintenance and for, yes.
But, but that was the, that was the, out of the three provisions that were, three items that were proposed tonight, that was the one that had the biggest price tag.
Right.
For work that is not currently pending. It, there is no work currently pending, as I understand it. What this does is allow staff to spend those funds. Instead of going through a regular purchase order scenario, uh, that I understand the city has done traditionally, this would put it in a different scheme, right, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Tony, can I just pray, add up to it, but as I read this, I believe it's $69,000 is going to be spent on remedial work, is that right?
It's remedial work, but it's an amount not to exceed, so...
Not to exceed the, the, the number that Mr. Tremblay brought up.
But there's no pending work. This is merely, this is merely authority to spend the money should the need arise. Am I, do I understand that correctly?
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, I get it, I get it, yeah.
I was, I'm sure I understa, okay.
Okay.
Okay, is there, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll move item H on consent.
Second?
Motion, a second, to approve item H that was on the consent calendar, please Motion carries unanimously. Okay, is there anything else I missed as we moved? So now we are going to new business, oral communications, informational items which do not require action. City manager?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
City attorney?
I have no items.
Um, Mrs. McDonald?
Just quickly, I talked a lot tonight.
Are you on?
No, I'm not. Brown Act meetings, I did attend EDC VC when Mr. Tremblay was out of town and good thing I did because barely had a quorum. The presentation, the primary presentation was on the STEM, our potential li, I'm not STEM, our youth lib, or museum, get it out there, in the old library, I knew what I was talking about. And so we've all heard that presentation before, but they were very complimentary to the city of Camarillo and working with them. In fact, sitting for EDC VC, EDC VC, they gave the city of Camarillo credit for the fact that they had to develop a business plan. And of course, sitting in that group, that was an important piece of looking for, for their support. The other thing that, that was interesting, and I, sorry I was late tonight, there was an accident on the freeway, so I started early and ended up late. But the general manager of Callejas was there and gave out a really neat map kind of diagram of water at the moment.
It was this?
At EDC VC, so I will get you copies of that. It was a, it was a really good handout that kind of just, two-sided, laid it all out, all the lakes, where the water is, reservoirs, water supply, but all over the county, actually went into some of what Met's doing, so it was a very good one. And I think that's it. Mr. Morgan?
Well, number one is kind of funny that they, that's his, I've hit that speech twice with them, EDC, uh, from Callejas. And with the maps and the whole shots showing where water is, and I've gone on that tour too, to see all those waters, all that stuff, because they did a tour that they'll invite you here one of these days soon for that kind of tour. Airport Authority, we looked at the budget and did a little bit and looked at the things that we have coming in the future. You know, the future plans for the airports, ports, not just one. And it was an interesting meeting. It went on and on. We had some people there that are on the, Kevin, what was that, there's major, the issue, there's only one issue.
The airport, that hangar?
Yes, the hangar group was there to, of course, voice their opinions. We'll be making some decisions next meeting, so it goes on forward to the board of supervisors. Vietnam Ad hoc Committee, Charlotte, good job. We moved along, you saw part of that tonight, so that was a result of that meeting. I don't have to go into that detail. We have a ranch board meeting, which Charlotte and I go to. I think, were you there last time, Charlotte? Yeah. We were talking mainly about a lot of things that are going to happen at the retreat and those things that we want to get done at the retreat. Well, went to the retreat too. That was a long day, it was one day, you know, up to one o'clock in the afternoon. And we discussed future movements by the, for improvement by the, you know, by the foundation and where they're going to go with the budget, all kinds of things like that. We brought, we divided up into committees. I sat on the one that has fundraising. And so we're looking at new and different ways and we'll see what happens. They're also wondering when we're going to replace or give them their new members. And I said, "I'm not exactly sure yet," because I'm not on that committee, but there's a, you know, the members we have to choose here pretty soon, I think there's two or three new ones.
Their new people take effect June, July 1st.
But have we picked them?
No.
That's what I mean. I, I said that July, you know it's going to come to you in July. Well, when are they going to pick them? I said, "I don't know." It's next, hopefully next month. Um, let's see, then we go down to, you know, we interviewed, all interviewed the client, our vice mayor, I mean, our assistant city manager, very, very good, I think, very good assistant city manager. He knows all about water, big time. Now that Tom solved it all, he doesn't have to do a whole lot except follow up. Took the Whibleows on a tour around the city one evening. He walked over from the Mormon church and they and their, their parents and their guides and spent more time in that room in there, them asking questions than anything. And that map?
They love the map.
Where's this, where's that, how are we going to do this, when are we doing that? And then the parents got involved and so we were there a lot longer than we thought we were going to be. Dosent volunteer party at the ranch house. Charlotte and I both went to that and I think that was a very good little reception for our, our volunteers. And that happens every year, so it says, "Thank you for what we did." Iowa Symposium at the Merritt Courtyard, that's our year in, year-round symposium. We had some speakers, 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 and most of them were PMA people, you know, preaching PMA, positive mental attitude, except we finally got the speaker that was water. And that was the secretary, Secretary of State for Water Resource Control Board. Now she's fairly new, but she was a fantastic speaker. And after it was over, I talked to her for a little while and said, told the situation with, with GMA at the time. And she says, "Well, I can help you." So if we had to go somewhere, we had the Secretary of Water Resource Control Board helping us. Anyway, she's a nice lady and she, you can get through to her pretty easy. The last thing is nothing, no meeting, but we're going to finally get our historic signs next few months, they've been ordered, they're coming, for the freeway for the ranch house. So I can tell them that now, found out tonight. And so that's it.
Mr. Tremblay?
So I was out of town for most of this last period since the last council meeting. I want to thank Mrs. McDonald for going to the April 19 EDC VC meeting and among other things, ensuring a quorum. I did attend today, I'm now sitting on the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, brand-new Energy JPA. I'm now sitting on the Finance Committee for that JPA as well as on the full board, so that, there was a meeting of the Finance Committee today. And then, since apparently it was a finance day, I also sat with Mrs. Craven with, on the council's own Finance Committee and Investment Committee meetings. Mr. Morgan, just one correction to what you said, I did not interview the, the new assistant city manager because...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I was out of town.
That's correct.
But, but I do know him professionally on the waterfront and have been impressed with his work, so I will look forward to welcoming him, welcoming him, wow, I need some more coffee, to, to the city staff. Or, or less, yeah. That's it for me, thanks.
Mr. Kilday?
Yes, um, committees, I, along with Mr. Morgan, attended the Airport Authority meeting. There's going to be some work on the Camarillo Airport that's coming out, which I think's going to be improvements. I also attended a VRSD meeting and unfortunately, it was the same day that the Animal Regs had a meeting and my alternate unfortunately was out of town, so I wasn't able to go to the Animal Regs meeting. Let's see, those are the meetings that I attended. I also was able to give a presentation for a Teacher of the Month. Rick Torres out at Rio Mesa High School. And Rick, I went to school with Rick, actually, I'm a few years older than Rick, but Rick has been very instrumental in the girls' track program out at Rio Mesa. Very interesting when I was there, I don't know if he was a student body president or whatever, but one of the students came up and thanked me to make sure to tell the, the council for supporting the after-prom, that, you know, he's really excited about that. So that was, that was kind of, you know...
Kevin, Rick Torres, real quick, did he, he was a very, one of their famous football, or baseball or football player?
He had track. Rick was a track guy.
Okay, because I remember his name in sports over there.
Yeah, yeah, Rick was a, was a pretty outstanding track person, kind of given his life to the track program, his, his adult life out there. his life to the track program, his adult life out there. Also, I was able to make some opening statements on behalf of the mayor for the entrepreneur with a Chamber of Commerce at the library. And if anybody has not had an opportunity to go, and you don't have to stay the whole time, but what they pitched, I felt was extremely interesting. A guy was up there, and he has developed a, well, first of all, it's elbow surgeries, and this was news to me, there's 150,000 elbow surgery, surgeries a year in the United States, 150,000.
Wow.
Now, most if not all, require some after-surgery, you know, physical therapy. So, what he has designed is a robotic apparatus that you hook onto your elbow, and it makes you do the exercises, one, two, and you program it how many of these exercises you're supposed to do, and then it just stops, and you have to do it, because it's programmed, so you can't say, "I don't need physical therapy," you have to do this. And what he thinks is that hospitals are gonna be able to use this, but more exciting in his mind is that people will be able to buy this, or rent it, and take it home, and they won't have to go to the physical therapist's office to do this. And it was also brought up, very interesting, that perhaps in 10 years, maybe 15, with the robotics and the artificial intelligence, that up to 50% of the jobs that we currently have now will be obsolete. Now, there'll be other jobs that are gonna, you know, come on the forefront, that we don't even know what they are right now, but it's very interesting to listen, it's a whole new world out there about the type of businesses that are gonna be, not only now, but in the future, and I found it extremely interesting to listen to these entrepreneurs come up with these ideas that they've got. So, they're really on, I don't mean to go too long, but they're really on the right track, and I think, I really believe our funding is money well-spent in this, I was very excited about this. Also, on behalf of the mayor, I was able to address, there was students from Rancho Campania that actually marched, I believe, from their school out to our park here about gun, gun safety issues, and there was probably 70 or 80 of them, and after I gave a very short introduction, a number of them came up and asked me some questions. And if these are our future leaders of our city, future leaders of our state and nation, we are in good hands. They're smart, they're thoughtful, they're very respectful, and they're very passionate about issues, and I think that is something that, I was very, very impressed with them, and I answered the questions that they gave me to the best of my abilities. But we have a whole new wave of young people coming up that are really, really advanced, and it was really, really refreshing for me to, to address them, and I was honored to do it, quite frankly. So, with that, I believe that's all I had tonight.
I don't have two more, I'm sorry, I better report them. Save Lives with Rabbi Lang and the group that have got federal grants to do anti-drug stuff. We met over there the other night, short meeting, we had it done real quick, and some minor, minor things that we talked about, and a lot of things went on about two-minute timeout time in beginning of the day or something, to try to get the schools to give them that kind of thing in class. We'll see how that works. The other thing, too, ribbon cutting at Make It Healthy. Make It Healthy is over by New York Bagel, by your place, over by the Marriott, that's gonna, that's, that's a good little store.
What is it?
It, Herbalife, you ever heard of Herbalife? Well, it's a big, a store that sells all kinds of Herbalife stuff, and I've lost seven pounds with it.
Since you went there?
Yeah, not since that date, no, it's been three, four weeks, but still, without much...
It's going right now.
Without much exercise, I, I had done that, 'cause I had, I've not been able to exercise in a while, and so, to me, that's a pretty good shot. Anyway...
Well, I'm happy to hear that you attended that ribbon cutting, I want to tell you, I drove around and around and around that shopping center and never did find it.
They waited for you.
After 20 minutes, I went home, I couldn't find it, I called the chamber, they said, "We don't know, it's somewhere by the Roxy Theater." So, that's...
Roxy, oh no, it's across the street.
That's all I could get out of anybody at the chamber office.
They didn't have their balloons on?
It's in the corner, where you can't really, it's hard to see it unless you, you can't just drop it.
I couldn't, I couldn't find it, so I, I do wish them luck, and I hope more people find it than I did.
I told them you...
I also thank you, Mr. Kildy, for taking over for the events while I was at RDP 21, things back in Washington DC. I did attend all the committees that everybody said I attended, the Vietnam Veterans, the Ranch Foundation Board, I did not attend their retreat because I was gone. The Investment and Finance Committee meetings today, and I did go back to Washington DC. Everybody's happy that they got the money they got in this year's budget. What the problem is, is that the budget wasn't approved till now, where it should've been approved in October, or in September, and so now they have just a few months, because the federal has the user lose things, so if they don't have the money obligated and under contract according to federal procedures, then the money will go back, so it's, it's pretty frustrating to them. I want to announce that on Thursday will be the first Throwback Thursday at Camarillo Ranch, they have food trucks and lots of them, they have entertainment, they have a beer booth, starts at 6:00 PM tomorrow, tomorrow?
Yep, tomorrow.
And it's lots of fun. I also attended the National Association for Women Business Owners Bravo Awards, which was very interesting, learned a lot about a lot of new businesses, a good many of them here in Camarillo. I attended one ribbon cutting, and I think that's it. So, now we have, did we finish our closed sessions? I know we have one study session to finish.
We have one study session, one closed session.
And one closed session, okay, yes.
Do you have anything to announce regarding the parolee proposition of the training center, anything to tell the public, or they can get their cards, or anything?
We have cards here at City Hall in the city clerk's office?
Yes.
Yes, at the city clerk's counter, we also have them at the library.
And there are cards at the library, cards are yellow and green cards, and they are regarding the parolee issue. If you would like to not have that facility in Camarillo, I suggest you fill out the cards, put your stamp on them, and send them off, they're all pre-addressed to the two committee chairmen, so you need to send two cards, to the subcommittee on finance for the Assembly, and the other one to the state senate. There's a lot new. The, uh... At the committee hearing, the chairman, Mrs. Skinner, the committee hearing where I testified, Mrs. Skinner kept saying that they were going to expunge the records of the people, they were going to get them this training, they were going to do all these things, and I later realized what she said, you know, how you'd roll things over in your mind, and so, sure enough, there are a couple of bills that have been introduced to take away some of our arguments, and the bills had already been introduced, but one in the senate, one in the, in the Assembly, so that it would forbid licensing boards from not allowing felons to obtain the licenses for a whole lot of things that currently they're forbidden from attaining, and one of those would be a firefighter. They also are working with Oxnard College to do the training at Oxnard College, which would, through their program, which would be out at Camarillo Airport. So, they're, they're working very hard to try to find ways so that the program will occur. What else can I say? So, I think that our chance, if we're going to, if we're gonna beat it down, is gonna have to be in these two committees, that's, that's my opinion, and I have no reason for that, but that's just my gut feeling, I don't know.
I don't have anything different.
Okay.
Except I will say one thing.
On that, there's apparently, that new licensure bill that Mrs. Craven was referring to, it's, I think it's AB 2293, and that, that was a bill that was, it was a gut and amend bill that was just gutted and amended to deal with that EMT certification process for felon, for ex-felons, and I think it was as a direct result of this entire issue, and so...
And all of our arguments.
Right, so, so, this is the way that Sacramento is operating.
And so, they're still having gut and amends, because that has nothing to do with what it was introduced as.
They'll still be able to see their next felon and do a record check.
They still can't pass the background check.
What?
That'll be the next thing they try.
They can't pass the background check.
That'll be the next thing they do.
That's when they come into expunging the records.
Pardon me?
Okay. We will now recess to a, to continue our study session, and then we'll go into closed session again.